We are live and ready to broadcast.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting Tuesday, February 28, 2023. I would like to establish a quorum and call the call the meeting to order. City Clerk, if you can do a roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
And Mayor Wixson?
Here. Mobile. Thank you. And if we can observe a moment of silence, please. And if I could please ask Councilmember Edwards to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, I am mobile, remote. We are at C-MANK in New York, in Washington, DC. I forgot what state I'm in. So this evening, I'm going to ask the city clerk, Ms. Swanson, to assist with public comment. With that, I will ask Mr. Newmeyer for a closed session report, please.
Good evening, Ms. Ms. Madam Mayor, excuse me. No closed session items to report.
Thank you very much. I will turn to council member reports, announcements. Someone like to lead off?
I'll go ahead, Mayor. Thank you. I have two separate announcements. The first one is the Rotary Club of Morro Bay is putting on an earthquake benefit for Turkey and Syria. And that takes place Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at Kolesk Bookstore from 4:00 to 6:30 PM. And that there's no charge for the event to attend, but they're accepting donations. So the second thing I want to talk about is I recently put out my very first council newsletter. So if you did not receive a newsletter from me, it means you're not on my list yet. So if you'd like to sign up, you can go to or you can email me at JFord, J-F-O-R-D, at morobayca.gov and just ask to be added to my newsletter. And if you did get a newsletter and you don't want it, please email me and let me know you don't want to be on my newsletter. No hard feelings. But I just want to let you know that I'll do my best to get them out every few months or so to keep people up to date on what's happening in Morro Bay and hot topics and those sorts of things. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to talk about one item this evening. And that is to be voted on tonight, which is the REACH representative from the council. And I just wanted to say that I hope to be able to continue my work in economic development that I began during my time as the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. It's important that the public know that the REACH organization was born from years, years of workshopping economic development in our city as well as the county. It was a coming together of the communities and recognizing that we are stronger together when it comes to economic development conversation. As the conversations and issues have evolved, REACH became more focused on head of household jobs and bringing those to the Central Coast, including those related to renewable energy. And it was mainly because of the impending closure of Diablo Canyon and the loss of 1,300 approximately of those head of household jobs. I want you to know that I take economic development seriously. It's our city's future stability and growth at the center of it. With tonight's vote, I intend to share with you what I learned at the two roundtables coming up, one this next week, March 9, and how it fits into our economic planning as well as our goals moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
Let's see. I have a couple of things here on my calendar. Some other council members attended these as well, but the christening of the new boat in the new harbor boat and the presentation of Ted, I'm not sure how to say his last name, Schifoni, our new harbor director. And also on, that was on the 20th and then on the 21st, the yacht club served as the point for people who were interested in working on the San Salvador ship, planning to have it come visit us in August. And so that was the first meeting of that group. So those and of course, the dedication of the WRF, which was just, that was just fabulous. It was so interesting to see that thing finished and working and the pride of the staff who were doing all the demonstrations and running the equipment. So those are the things that I had on my calendar for this week, last week, actually.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Councilmember Landrum?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to just share real quick. So when I said I was at C-MANK, that acronym is for California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference. And I'm here with our Public Works Director and our Harbor Director. And we've spent the last two days meeting with several of our representatives. We've had nine meetings with our lobbyists, congressional and senate representatives, and are working on opportunities for securing revenue for our North Deep Pier and for our harbor infrastructure as well as support financing for our water reclamation facility and ongoing recyclable water. So that's what we're here for. We'll be back Thursday. We have one more day and then we'll be returning. I want to also talk about the open house at the water reclamation facility. And I'd like to thank Mr. Collick and Demaryius Hansen, all their staff. It was a great event. There were a lot of people there participating. And I would share with the public that there were so many people who were interested in attending. I believe they had approximately 300 visitors. And talking with Public Works, they realized that there is a much greater interest out there and people who would like to attend. So watch the hot topics to come up here in the near future as they are able to schedule some other open house opportunities. Hopefully, some of those will be on the weekends for those of you who are working during the week. And also, they're going to work with the schools for field trips for students in our county. And the other thing I would like to do is also thank the harbor staff for the boat christening and to welcome the new staff members, a new harbor patrol officer as well as our harbor director. And a shout out to Becca Kelly and all her staff for a great job and a great event. It was a beautiful day. And it was great to see a new employee in a new boat all at once. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just wanted to offer a few remarks as my last city council meeting. So I stood before previous city council on October, I was going to guess, 21st of 2017. I was really nervous and excited. I shared with the council and the community at that time, under public comment, because I wasn't in the seat yet, that I did not get to that point on my own. It was my parents, coaches, mentors, and my faith and my friends and all of those folks and things that pushed me to be who I became and to feel confident enough to take on this challenge. And that rings true today as I depart as your city manager. I was only able to do the things I was able to do in this job because of the support of all of you in this room and beyond. I feel we were successful in getting important things done over the past five years while keeping our community safe, clean, vibrant, and fun. And that was because of the team, all of us. To the mayors and council members and advisory board members, commissioners, past and present, and their spouses, each one of you and each one of them are dedicated public servants and leaders, volunteers who wear their hearts on their sleeves and make significant personal sacrifices to help lead us into the future. You all have my appreciation and respect, and we are blessed by your leadership. To our community members here and out at home watching later on, the love you all show for each other and this amazing place is unparalleled. Thank you for showing up and sharing your concerns, hopes, and ideas. Thank you for passing Measure E and for the rates that you pay each month on water and sewer that made our new Water Resource Center possible. Please stay engaged, embrace this new city council and city staff and ultimately, the new city manager. We depend upon you for our collective success. City staff, I can't say enough good things about you. I could talk for hours about each one of the individuals who wear uniforms, work in the offices, the Police Department, Police Chief Cox, and now Amy Watkins, who was sworn in last Friday. Thank you. To the fire team, previous Chief Steve Knuckles and now Chief McCrayne, you guys do a tremendous job. Thank you, Public Works Directors in the past, Rob Blyvik and now Greg Qualick. You guys are a city into yourself in doing utilities, maintenance, engineering, and a whole host of other things to keep our city running. Thank you to the harbor, former harbor director Eric Endersby and interim director Becca Kelly and now Ted Schifon. You guys handle so much. And our future depends upon what happens in that harbor. Community Development, Scott Graham. Thank you for dealing with the stuff that comes across the counter every day, but also thinking about our future. Recreation, our Kirk Carmichael. You run a great organization through seniors, youth activities, sports, administration, basically from cradle to grave. You take care of our community. And the unsung here is an administration, finance, and IT. That's Sarah Johnson Rios. Emily Conrad, who served during her, when Sarah was out. And also Jen Calaway and Katie Lickdick in the past. HR with Rachel Hendricks. And the best city clerk in the world, Dana Swanson. And also our partners in the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Morro Bay. You're great partners. Thank you. I have nothing but deep respect and admiration for each of you and love for each of you. And it is my unbiased opinion that this is the best city and community in Sloane County and beyond. So last, I want to thank my wife, Casey, and my children, Eli and Lily, who lift me up each and every day so that I can show up here and be my best for you. I love you all. And in closing, if I can just make a quick comment here, because this is such a great place, a special place, please continue to be curious and be kind to each other. Keep being a shining example for the rest of the world how a strong community can achieve success and vibrancy in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I know you won't be far away and maybe you'll be on the other side of the podium real soon. And yes, I would like to give a shout out to, we were at Chief Watkins' badge penning last week, which was wonderful to be a part of. So thank you for that also. We have a presentation this evening from our CFAC Chair, Stephen Peck, on Measure Q and E report. And I believe that is upcoming right now.
Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Stephen Peck, the Vice Chair of the CFAC this year. I'm here to give the annual presentation for the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. What I'm going to cover, sort of the provision, what we do for the community in terms of the Oversight Committee and simply the Finance Oversight Committee, some of the things that we look at when we look at Q and E conformance. That's always, it's part of our responsibility that we take very seriously. Some of the things we've accomplished this year. And then available for any comments. The Citizens Finance Advisory Committee has several responsibilities in Q and E. And that's basically to oversee the expenditures, provide advice to you directly from the citizens about the conformance of the Q and E expenditures as they were provided by the voters. We look at, you know, Q and E is funding police and fire and harbor safety positions, maintain and enhance community cleanliness and safety, invest in infrastructure such as street paving, storm drains, and vehicle replacements, fund positions to address the backlog of funded capital projects and maintaining appropriate reserves. Those are the council priorities for Q and E that were adopted in April 2021. As the CFAC, we also do budget oversight and overview, not only with Q and E, but with mid-year budget adjustments and an overview of the budget itself. We also make other recommendations and do additional studies directed by you to improve the transparency, maintain compliance, and promote citizen participation and effectiveness. And sometimes that just means finding a way to make the budget available and legible to the regular public. Those are complex documents. Your staff does a wonderful job on them. But we try and make sure it shouldn't take an accounting degree to find out where the money is going in the city. So that's part of our responsibility. As the, we also look at, in terms of the legislative purposes of Q and E, although there isn't a specific requirement that the council fund each and every one of the priorities and activities that were identified in Q and E, we do look at those as a committee to make sure we're sort of operating within that framework. So we use this as what I would call kind of the rubric. Are we on track? Are we getting off track? It doesn't mean you need to fund each and every one of those activities, but we're kind of firm believers that this is what the voters approved and operating within kind of those guardrails is important. And so we make a recommendation to you about Q and E. We take a look at this and determine, is the balance there? Or are we emphasizing, are we pushing the buttons that the electors expected us to push when we're spending those funds? So I can tell you that that's an active, vibrant conversation that we have at the CFAC. The committee met in January to look at the, review the Q and E expenditures. Overall finding was that the Q and E expenditures were in fact in conformance with the intent of the voters. There is an ongoing active conversation about, you know, long-term commitments of those funds. But again, that's, those are issues for the future, future review of the, of those funds. We were busy this year. There were some things that were taken off our plate earlier, earlier last year, including the WRF and the, what we used to call the CAFR. But we did review and commented on Q and E transactions during the fiscal year. We reviewed two quarterly budget reports with feedback provided to the city finance staff. We had a presentation by HDL, your sales tax consultant, about how Measure Q and E tax revenues are collected. They're collected differently than the general sales tax. And so there isn't necessarily a one-to-one correspondence of the general 1% sales tax going up and your Q and E revenues going up or down. That was very interesting because it helps us understand the growth potential for those funds. We also had a role in the review of the quarterly WRF reports. We looked at the Measure Q and E budgets, the mid-year budget measure for Q and E review and recommended council compensation. That was an item we found that was somewhat overdue, recommended to you what that compensation should be. Also, we looked, took a deep dive into pension liabilities that the city's making good progress on, including the OPEB liabilities. We will, you know, last year or last cycle, we did do a recommendation on council goals and policies. We don't have a recommendation to you tonight. We're going to be covering that at next month, one of next month's meetings. We didn't have a quorum this last, this last meeting. I advise you on that. And finally, the quarterly WRF reviews. I will say, before I forget about it, that we did want to note that Homer Alexander was a key member of this committee. He is now termed off. But Homer has been working on this stuff for 20 years or more and has done a wonderful job for this community. So CFAC wanted to note his service to the community because it's been tireless. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions. And again, a recommendation is that your Q and E expenditures are in line with the intended expenditure guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. And thank you for your service to CFAC as well as Mr. Alexander and the other members, current and past of the CFAC Committee. We really appreciate it. With that, I will offer questions to the council members of Mr. Peck. Any questions from anyone? No?
No, just to thank you. Huge thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Peck. I'm sure we will be working with you a lot more as our budget process starts. And I appreciate your help that you've offered me also. Thank you. With that, we will move into public comment. And again, the city clerk, Ms. Swanson, will be assisting with that this evening. And we'll be calling you up for those of you who turned in speaker slips. Thank you.
We have several speaker slips tonight. We will start with Mary Ann Britton. And then following Mary Ann is Jean Marie Colby.
Hello and good evening. I'm Mary Ann Britton. I'm here tonight with my husband, Phil, and my neighbor. First of all, we want to thank you for your time and your dedication to the city of Morro Bay and the time you're taking away from your families to help support the Morro Bay community and family. I'm here tonight, first of all, to hopefully bring attention and educate about the differences between the home-shared vacation rentals and the unhosted vacation rentals. My husband and I have hosted a home-shared vacation rental for six and a half years in our home. We live upstairs and we are there when our guests are there. We interact with our guests. And our guests are quiet. In fact, they're even quieter than when our children come to visit versus the unhosted vacation rentals, which can be loud and often unaware of the neighbors' routines and schedules. We feel we add to the quality of our neighborhood. We support our local community by referring our guests to local restaurants, businesses, and local entertainment here as well. We respect our neighborhood and our guests want the flavor of the neighborhood. And they often become our lifelong friends, many of our guests, versus the unhosted, whole-home vacation rentals without the owners. They're often unaware of their noise levels because they're there on a getaway and they're having fun. Yet, we pay the same fees and the same taxes as the homes that are making four, five, six times as much as we do. It takes us a whole month of income just to pay our annual fees to the city and to pay our license. Yet, the home shares, that's for the home shares, the unhosted vacation rentals, it might take them one or two nights and they've been able to cover their fees. We would appreciate if the city council would revisit these discrepancies between the home-sharing vacation rentals and the unhosted vacation rentals. We believe in paying our fair share of taxes and fees, but we would like them to be reflected and be more proportional, possibly on a sliding scale, in proportion to the amount and income that we are making. So in closing, we look forward to working with the city council to help solve and make the differentiation between these fees and the type of taxes that we are paying from the home-shared vacation rentals and the unhosted vacation rentals. We love Morro Bay and we want to be able to afford to stay here another 24 years. So we look forward to working with you and opening up that discussion. Thank you.
Following Jean Marie, who's welcome to come up now, will be Teri Simons.
Good evening and thank you for hearing us tonight. I also want to thank you for your service to the city of Morro Bay. My name is Jean Marie Colby and I've had my hosted Airbnb since November. And right when I started it up, I found out that the, that the business license fee total for me was $891. And I asked around to neighbors who have vacation rentals in Cayucos and they said $34 in Cayucos and the county of San Luis Obispo is $89. And I was quite surprised about this. And after running the Airbnb for a few months, Mary Ann and I thought we should bring this to your attention and ask about reconsideration based on the fact that we are low-revenue mom-and-pop businesses, that we, I make sure that the porch light isn't bothering my neighbor. I make sure that my guests park in a place that doesn't bother my neighbor. We, because we're home a lot and we're managing these businesses, it's almost like we're a little extra neighborhood watch for our guests. But, you know, kind of keeping an eye on things and making sure everybody's happy and that there's no cause for complaints or anything like that. And we feel like we actually add to the neighborhood with our businesses. They're super quiet. They're very considerate and realize they're in a neighborhood in somebody's home. And we bring people from all over Europe and Asia here to our businesses that just love it. And we send them to your restaurants. We send them to Hearst Castle to rent kayaks and spend their money here. And we would ask for some extra considerations. So I sent this letter first February 8. I don't know if you all saw it. It's a two-page letter going through the details. And then we sent an email as well. I have some extra copies. If anybody hasn't read it, I can leave paper copies here with you. But I specifically asked in the email that you consider reducing the, the TOT had an additional 4.5% added to it. My understanding is that was for enforcement. I'm not sure if it was for enforcement of, you know, shutting down parties or if it was for enforcement of the unlicensed Airbnbs. But it feels like it's not fair to ask law-abiding business owners to pay this exorbitant fee when it really should be transferred in the fines for the people who are running the unlicensed businesses or that are having complaints, you know, because of the way they're affecting the neighborhood. And instead of us paying, you know, what turns out to be a disproportionate amount based on our income, that they should be paying for that. And, and they also contribute to the neighborhoods in a lot of ways, too. But we, we feel like we should be distinguished because of many reasons. The way we run our businesses and the amount of income we have from them and so on. Oh, okay. It's like the song in the Oscars that comes on. I guess I'm done. So anyway, does anybody need a written copy of this letter? I have some extra copies. And I can leave my, our business cards. Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Following Teri is Rachel Wilson. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Madam Mayor, I'm going to try to keep this short because I know there's a big time difference where you are and you need to get to bed early so you can make all those meetings again tomorrow. First of all, I've gotten to know Scott Collins fairly well during his tenure here and he's going to be sorely missed. And I just wanted to add my personal congratulations that he's going to get to stay in Morro Bay as an employee of San Luis Obispo. And I can tell you, they're getting a great deal with him. He's a wonderful administrator a great deal with him. He's a wonderful administrator, and I've really come to appreciate the way in which he does business. I hadn't planned to speak on the vacation rental hosted versus unhosted, but I am tremendously sympathetic with the pleadings that you just heard. I think that the, having lived next to an unlicensed vacation rental for some time, I can tell you that the difference between a hosted rental and even a licensed but unmanned rental is spectacular, and I would encourage this council and staff to cut these people that are hosting their vacation rentals a little slack in fees. Moving on, there's been quite a groundswell of concern among the public and reflected in a lot of the letters tonight regarding the way in which the Market Street project is being processed through the closed sessions. I had an interesting conversation with the city attorney before the meeting, and he managed to clarify in my mind several of the relevant issues in terms of what can and can't be discussed, but more importantly, the way the process works. And I would encourage you, Madam Mayor, to give Mr. Niemeyer a couple minutes to reiterate what he told me, because I found it very valuable and very reassuring that the process as it's operating is appropriate and that it will eventually give us the results that those of us that are concerned are looking for. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Wilson. I'm from Cayucos. And in the very near future, if you haven't already been asked to do this, the California State Land Use Commission is looking at where to put ports. And right now, Morro Bay and Port Huinimi are both considered for operations and management. And when I was a child, my parents used to say, careful what you wish for, it might come true. So, my question is, are we ready to let the genie out of the bottle? We are ready for operations and maintenance. So, looking at this, this is down near Coleman Park. It will take part of Coleman Park. It will take the parking lot next to Coleman Park. It will effectively set our tourist area apart from our Morro Rock. And so, realistically, think about what that would look like to Morro Bay and what it would do, especially since I know we're all thinking green. And the state of California right now is saying Morro Bay and Port Huinimi are equal partners in this, that both of us could very successfully take care of operations and management. So, moving on. So, our question is, are paddleboarders, surfers, and young sailors ready? When they bring in operations and maintenance, they're going to bring in three different kinds of vessels. The first vessel is up to 400 feet tall, long. And if you're thinking about that, the smokestacks are 450 feet long. I've been told that the Papagayo is about 95 feet long. And so, anyway, the other ones are of 100 to 130 feet and 65 to 90 feet. So, imagine these big ships coming in with their wakes, with their draft, coming in to our area that is also tourist to get to their waterfront berths. Also, where are the people who are parking here going to park? If you think about it, if they only bring in 50 people and they take out 50 people, that's 100 parking places that are going to be needed, because people are going to park, come in, and park again. So, once the genie is out, what's next? This was Port of Long Beach during the 1960s, at the left. And then and now, this is the port of Long Beach today. So, once you start industrialization, think about what's going to happen. Think about the port difference. Think about our city. Think about our Embarcadero. Next slide, please. This was Port Huinimi quite a while back on the left-hand side, but at one point, it looked this way. This is Port Huinimi today. It can move to Port Huinimi. Which is the better green choice? Thank you.
Next, we have Erin Oakes, followed by Ed Spera.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Erin Oakes of Morro Bay. And before I begin my remarks, I want to thank Mr. Collins for his incredible service to the community. His tenure as city manager opened up a new era of transparency and dignity to his office, and I really appreciate everything he's done, all the contributions to the community, and it's immeasurable. And I wish him the best of luck at the Housing Authority of Slow. So, two weeks have passed since I spoke at a public comment addressing potential national conflicts of interest of Councilmember Jen Ford. Although she indicated at the previous meeting that she would personally address these issues with anyone who emailed her, Ms. Ford remains uncooperative and non-responsive to resident concerns, including my own. So, the best way to move forward from this matter and restore public trust, in my opinion, is to communicate with constituents openly as initially promised. Due to the lack of responsiveness, I will pose the following questions to the entire council and hope answers will be publicly given. Question number one. On September 10th of last year, Castle Winds CEO Allo Weinstein donated $2,000 to then-Mayor John Heding's reelection campaign. On November 1st, Weinstein met with the council to negotiate the price and terms of payment for outfall facilities previously used by the Morro Bay Power Plant. This led to concerns from residents about Ms. Weinstein essentially purchasing access to the negotiation table on a project that was not properly put out to bid. Has Ms. Weinstein reached out to the city council to continue these negotiations? And have members of the city council disclosed through ex parte communications with Ms. Weinstein on the public record? And have any members of this body requested continued negotiations on behalf of Mrs. Weinstein? Question number two. Vista Energy is currently proposing the world's largest 600-megawatt battery storage facility for Morro Bay, and public records indicate that Vista is actively in conversation with city officials. Residents who privately met with council members within the past six months have reported, council members proclaiming the project is quote-unquote "a done deal" and quote-unquote "guaranteed," despite a lack of a completed environmental impact report, a formalized agenda item, or a formal opportunity for residents to speak about it and participate in the public process. So, during her Assembly campaign last year, now-Assemblywoman Dawn Addis expressed support for the proposed battery storage facility. So, has any council member disclosed any ex parte communications with Assemblywoman Addis and/or Vista Energy staff regarding conversations about this facility? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ed Spera. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for letting me have the opportunity to speak. I've been a resident of Morro Bay in Main Street here, above Thailand's Park, for 26 years. My concern is the traffic that is speeding on my street. I, with my wife, cross my street two, three times a day to go for a walk, and the traffic is supposed to be going 30 miles an hour, and they're telling you they're going 40 and 50. Along with the bikes and the electric bikes that are coming during the summer months, there's absolutely no lanes for these people to be able to travel. Along with that, the sidewalk, I'll tell you where I'm talking about, from Olive Street to Piney Way. There's an area there that it's asphalt sidewalk, and that sidewalk is horrible. It's completely uneven, and you take all of the eucalyptus branches and so forth. My wife has almost fallen a couple of times. I'm here just to share this information with you and hope that there is something in the works that's going to mitigate this. Thank you.
Ray Ridden, followed by Sharice Hanson, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and our esteemed city council. My name is Ray Ridden. I'm a six-year resident of Morro Bay and the 2023 Chair of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm here tonight to formally introduce myself to you and to personally thank you for your leadership. I also wanted to update you and the community on the Chamber's upcoming annual awards gala to be held on Friday, April 21st. Among the many important things we do at the Chamber, we take extra pride in hosting this event, as it brings our residents, our businesses, elected officials, and special guests together as one to championship our entire, to champion the entire Morro Bay community. Our planning committee had a lot of fun this year coming up with the theme, Morro Bay in Wonderland, a play on the timeless Lewis Carroll classic. Throughout the evening's festivities, we will honor Morro Bay's Citizen of the Year, our Living Treasure, our Business of the Year, and our Nonprofit of the Year. This year's menu will be a true taste of Morro Bay with multiple local eateries showcasing their special culinary creations. More than 35 businesses will be participating in our silent auction at the event, and we will be raising funds to again support scholarships for Morro Bay High School. The award recipients are selected by a group of prior-years honorees who will meet in mid-March to review all nominations submitted by the community members and make their recommendations to the Chamber Board. We need the community's input. Please go to the Chamber website and submit nominations for Citizen of the Year, Living Treasure, Business of the Year, and Nonprofit of the Year. You can also review a list of prior-year award recipients and on the Chamber's website, morrobay, or morrochamber.org. Thank you again for the honor of being able to speak tonight. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me, Honorable Mayor, where she is, and city council and staff. My name is Sharice Hanson, and I am the 2023 Vice Chair of the Morro Bay Chambers' Board of Directors and the 2023 Co-Chair of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee. I am also an Embarcadero business owner of over 23 years. I have a Tidlins master lease, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Harbor Advisory Board. I also have three kids, boys, fourth-generation Morro Bay residents, but I'm here tonight with my Chamber Board hat on. I'd like to thank all of the city's staff and department heads for their participation in the Squeaky Wheel Roundtable event that the Chamber held last month. It continues to be one of my favorite Chamber events. It's a wonderful opportunity for business and community members to engage one-on-one with city staff. Together with a Chamber survey to the members, participants from the feedback of the Squeaky Wheel, and the Governmental Affairs Committee review of member feedback, I am pleased that the Chamber has provided a comprehensive, vetted material, and we sent that to the advisory boards and to the council for goal-setting. We are proud to contribute the business voice and hope it's heard when you consider the next two years countables. Thank you so much for your time.
Shell Voorhees, followed by Erica Crawford.
Honorable Mayor, city council, and city leaders. My name is Shell Voorhees, and I am an owner of the Ugly Mug Ceramics on Main Street and a Chamber member. I'm here tonight to share how the Chamber has helped and has been an integral part of our business. Being first-time business owners in Central Valley Transplants, my partner Amy and I felt we needed for more mooring in the Morro Bay business community. We were welcomed into the Chamber family nearly three years ago, and I feel this partnership is vital to our success. We feel that the Chamber has fostered connectedness to other local businesses, city administration, as well as local and visiting prospective customers. Our involvement in shop sip-and-stroll events, the Squeaky Wheel meeting, meetings, and mixers have afforded us priceless opportunities to network, glean valuable information, and build a broader customer base. The support of Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce for us has been invaluable. Early on in our small business endeavor, we were faced with difficult circumstances when our landlord passed away suddenly. Our tenant agreement was in jeopardy, and it was transferred to an out-of-town property management group. And we thought we were on the edge of losing much of what we had worked for, and we really weren't sure what to do. So, we reached out to our Chamber, and without hesitation, we were thrown a lifeline and direction that ultimately proved to save us from being in open pocket for some unscrupulous types, unscrupulous types. Not only were we given a path forward in a moment of supreme uncertainty, we were assured that we had the support of our business community and a sense of confidence to persevere in a really rough and tough moment for us. With Morro Bay Chamber, I feel that our needs are understood, and in this financial climate, it is crucial that we walk a fine line between remaining accessible to our customers and keep our doors open and the lights on. Our partnership with the Chamber is a relationship that helps us manifest our goals in having a stable and long-lasting business in Morro Bay. Events like the shop sip-and-stroll have put us on the map for many local folks who otherwise would never venture into town. Our cash register rings on a night of the week when downtown is normally shuttered at 5:00. Events like this are a shot in the arm for us in terms of making money, but also a boost of morale in the neighborhood. And all we have to do is be there and open our doors. In short, our start in Morro Bay has been remarkable due to the shared relationship we have with our Chamber and the alliances we have made with the members who have shared an experience growing up in this beautiful place of Morro Bay. The synergy that we share is essentially to the, essential to the longevity of our business, and I do believe that we are not alone in this sentiment. We are proud downtown business owners. We try to promote membership to neighbors who have yet to take part in what the Chamber has to offer, and we will never not support Morro Bay Chamber. Thank you. Congratulations, Amy.
Following Erica is Barry Brannon.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Erica Crawford, and I have been the President and CEO of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce since 2016. I am employed by the Chamber and report to a 12-member Board of Directors that is elected by the Chamber membership via single slate each year. I direct the work of two full-time staff members, Membership Director Lindsay Hanson and Marketing Coordinator Jody Ollier. The Morro Bay Chamber is organized under Section 501(c)(6) of the Internal Revenue Code, which defines our nonprofit entity as an association of persons or a business league having a common business interest whose purpose it is to promote the common business interest through activities directed to the improvement of business conditions. The Morro Bay Chamber Board directs the strategy and the structure of the organization. They have fiduciary, loyalty, and care duties to the Chamber. In layman's terms, when the board members attend their monthly meetings, they hang up the hats that they wear in their personal and professional lives and put on their Chamber hats to conduct board business on behalf of the over 300-member investors that they have been elected to represent. The Board receives input from the members via direct in-person outreach and meetings and an annual survey conducted by a third-party Chamber Professional Association. Additionally, they receive reports from advisory boards that serve at their pleasure. These advisory committees are the 14-member Governmental Affairs Committee, or GAC, and the seven-member and growing Ambassadors Committee. Two-thirds of all board members are Morro Bay business owners themselves. 100% of the board members are business owners, employees, or 1099 contractors. 25% own businesses downtown, and 16% own businesses in the waterfront district. The Board is a 50-50 split between members who gender identify as female and as male. 84% of all Chamber's staff, board, and committee members live in Morro Bay. 95% live in the Estero Bay, and 100% live in Slow County. Our Chamber's vision is for a prosperous and well-informed business community. Some of our guiding principles include that facts matter, that we conduct our business with civility, and that we work to fix problems and not blame. The Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce does not take positions on people, and we do not take positions on projects. We do take positions on policy. When we ask our members each year what they want us to do and how we are doing, they consistently tell us that they want us to represent the business interest to government. Today's Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce is therefore focused on advocacy and on promoting our members' interests around economic vitality and community building, workforce development, and housing. We take positions on policies related to those focus areas. I encourage all community members to sign up for our mailing list for free. You can sign up on our website, where you can also discover who our member businesses, sponsors, partners, and leaders are. That website is morrochamber.org. I do look forward to providing a status report on the Chamber's ED efforts at a future date. That's a contract that we have together as a partner. Thank you.
Following Barry is Bill Martini.
Good evening, Council, Barry Brannon, Morro Bay. Scott Collins, I think when you first came to town, we said hello, and he said, oh, boy, this guy's going to be trouble. So, was I, I hope wasn't too bad. Congratulations on your new position, and as I said, then it's going to be exciting here. We have a report tonight from the city attorney on a closed-session report that there was no report. And I'd like to talk about the fact that there is a major item that needs to be talked about. I don't know if you read Zillow, but Zillow has a listing on a piece of property at 781 Market. It's for $3,890,000. The city of Morro Bay wants to develop the marketplace. And I, as a letter that was written to the closed session from past Mayor Peters, that property, if you go back far enough, was a trailer park down on the Embarcadero. I remember the raggedy Airstreams that were parked there that never moved, and it was quite a nice place for the fishermen. quite a nice place for the fishermen to stay. But the city used the parking and loofahs funds, and they purchased that property. And I think when they did that, they made a contract with all the people, the businesses in town, who do have to require to put in parking and loofahs, that they would provide parking for the city. Now, there's no information because it's closed session, but it's up for sale, and it doesn't talk about parking. The presentation has never been made. Mr. Simon said that he talked to the attorney earlier about some information. But I think it's really, very important that this property not be sold for development, as I understand it. This needs to be a parking structure, because if I went to the Chamber Roundtable, one of the biggest functions or problems that all of the Embarcadero leaseholders say, parking is a problem. Parking is a continual problem. And if you have any imagination, if you ever go to the Palm Theater downtown, there's a Palm Street parking garage. I envision that property can do the exact same thing. We could provide parking for this town, and it can be done, I think, through an enterprise zone, so any revenues would go back into it to retire any debt necessary to build it. But this property should not be sold. Should not be sold. I don't care how nice the man is that wants to buy it. I'd love, I can buy it if you want me to, but that's not the point. The point, this city needs it. This city needs parking, and I think you're violating the previous commitments, the spirit of parking and loofahs, and I think if someone really wanted to do it, it would be a very expensive lawsuit, but I think that the city would be vulnerable to this. Please do not sell this property. Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Martini, Morrow Bay. And I did speak on this particular piece of property at closed session, so I'm probably repeating myself a little bit for the public. But I agree with Barry on one of the points, and that is that this property sale should be put on hold. I think the whole idea of what the plan was for this Market Street development should be re-looked at. This was two generations of city councils ago that brought up this plan, and I don't know that it's a good fit for Morrow Bay at this time. If you're planning on keeping the low-key fishing village-type atmosphere, to actually put a, you know, a mega resort and totally change that area, I don't think is in the best interest of the character of Morrow Bay. The Breakers is a, the Breakers was a restaurant that's a white building next to the Dorn's Cafe. That used to be the Breakers Cafe. It was built in 1957, I know I'm repeating myself a little bit, by Harry Amsoil. And it really is a classic mid-century modern building. If this plan goes through, that building is due to be bulldozed and taken down. It structurally has good bones to it. There's nothing wrong with it. And as far as saving it, it should be repurposed. This is the last building on the Embarcadero that has early Morrow Bay history. And the Planning Commission now is talking about trying to save some of the historic structures from being removed. And so I think it needs a second look on how we can save this building, repurpose it. Down below was correct. It was an RV park. It was low-income. You're talking about affordable housing. That's what was there. And if parking's a better fit, or some other form, but I think if we can just bring this back to council and revisit it and put any potential sale on hold. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Marie, followed by Karen Aguilar.
Hello, everybody. So I would assume that everybody here would agree that Morrow Bay is a beautiful place to live, but there's that one pesky problem known as the homeless community. I'm here to advocate for them. And I'm curious as to why there's not a warming center for them during this cold front. Not only is it beneficial to them, but it's beneficial to the community. They could run the risk of becoming seriously ill. They shop the same place that you guys shop. They are around the community. They could get the community sick. They could die. And again, they could get really, really sick. I'm under the impression that because we're part of Slow County, that there are warming centers in Atascadero and Paso Robles, but they will not come out here and pick up the transients here and transport them, that we need to have our own transportation. That's not going to happen. There needs to be something soon with, when there's an extreme weather, you know, advisory for either heat or cold, the city is responsible for making arrangements for them to either cool off or heat up. They've been down in that ditch on 800 Quintana. First, they were flooded out two weeks ago. They had to regroup themselves. Everything came from whatever they had from before that they lost. Now, they're freezing to death. A tarp, a tent, maybe a heater. They could have a propane heater. They could kick over in the night. It could cause a fire. I understand that there's a lot of people that don't really think that they're part of the community, but I can guarantee you that a handful of them were born and raised here and have lived here all their lives. The oldest one that I'm good for, I used to be homeless myself. I've been housed now for a year. It's hard, because I want to bring all of them with me. The community needs to have a little bit more understanding in their situations and where they come from and what they've been through. Not only can they provide help to the community, it's going to take understanding to get them back into the community where they belong. Morrow Bay PD has implemented homeless liaison officers that go down and work with them one-on-one, and now they've taken them away, and they've brought in a so-called social worker that none of them want to talk to because they don't trust. I just think that there needs to be something done. You're going to have either illness or death on your hands, and every one of you is responsible.
And that's the last speaker's clip that I have.
I want to thank Lisa Marie for bringing up this very, very important topic. Every single time it rains, the first thing that comes to my mind are the poor homeless people. But I'm here wearing another hat. I am the President of Morrow Bay Beautiful, and I want to put a little, I don't know, bring some light into some of the things that we're doing this year. We just had our board meeting, and our board unanimously decided that we are going to, we sell the license plate holders. I'm sure you guys know about that. And we have decided to donate 25% of our profits to the Morrow Bay National Estuary Program, because we are just passionate about preserving the estuary. And so we just want to kind of let the community know that if they buy a license plate holder from us, that, or the people who are selling them on our behalf here in town, which is Hanson's Tires, Perry's Parcel, Under the Sea Gallery with Sharice Hanson, Coastal Treasures, and Boatyard Marketplace. All of that information is on our new website. We just updated our website, and we want to put a shout-out to Dean Sullivan from Sullivan Studios Design. It's an incredible website. He did such a great job, and he was just, he was a treasure to work with. So anyway, wanted to let you know about that. And also to, this is going to be our fourth year of scholarships to Morrow Bay High School seniors who show an appreciation to our environment. We gave out six scholarships last year, $500 each, and our goal this year is to double the number of kids and also double the awards. So if you have an old license plate holder, I've seen a few old ones around town, give us a shout-out, give me a call, let me know, and I'll be happy to deliver them. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public comment?
Natalia Merzouin. I'm being proactive here in anticipating a change because of what's going on in town with so many things being changed. And if nobody has brought it up before, I want to be able to do that. The fact that we have a chessboard, a giant chessboard, which is kind of a unique thing in Morrow Bay, that was built and put together by the efforts of two now recently deceased Morrow Bay residents, Boto Cora Shelley and Wayne Bigford. And that is, I would say, an underused, underdeveloped asset that Morrow Bay has. It could be a unique destination resource for the city. And we could have tournaments there from people all over the state or all over the nation. And, you know, I'm sure people would be delighted to bring, for a youth championship chess game sponsored by Morrow Bay in such a unique spot. I just want you all to know that it's a treasured feature of Morrow Bay before anybody thinks about giving it away, or selling it, or turning it into a parking lot or something else. We love it, and it's very special to this area. Thank you.
My name is Betty Winholz. Before I get into my regular comment, I want to acknowledge that this is the third time that different people have come up to you and asked you to do something about the homeless during weather conditions, and I don't see any report back from any of you that you have done anything about that. And I know that we have a committee, so I'm wondering why you're not taking action. My regular report is actually a deja vu from attending the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. We, when we put in our sewer plant, the WRF, it was done under the suggestion of our city staff that we do it as a consolidated permit with the Coastal Commission. Four years later, we've added $34 million to that project. The IPR part hasn't been done, the injection wells. You had the open house the other day where officials were honored in the morning, whether or not they participated in the actual hands-on, hard work of that. But us people who were paid for that were not invited. We could take tours, but you didn't invite us to the big celebration. And that was offensive to me, as I'm paying the $200 water bill every month. So this morning at the Board of Supervisors, the City of Pismo Beach is pressing the South County Sanitation District, and they got the approval of the Board of Supervisors to do a consolidated permit for their new wastewater project, which will supposedly also have recycled water, which is always questionable. I'm not sure why I'm telling you, other than to let you know, I'm hoping that we didn't put that standard out there for this community to be ruined like I feel like we've been hurt. I feel like the, our supervisor, former supervisor Bruce Gibson, did not do them any favors. He didn't do us any favors when we were going through the process, and I guess I want that out there known as well. I want it known that Debbie Arnold, the supervisor from North County, was very supportive of the people, that she recognized that it's important to keep decisions local and not send them off to the state when we need to have them done locally with local people. So I just wanted to share that disappointing experience with you and encourage you not to repeat what you've done before, because some of you were involved with that, either directly or indirectly. And then put a point back at the homeless thing and get on it.
Public comment is open, if there are any other speakers.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Paul Donnelly of Morrow Bay. I wanted to bring up the paving that was done on Quintana Road, and I'm glad that it's finally been done, although they're still working on it, it appears. But one of the concerns I have is especially Quintana going down to South Bay Boulevard at night, especially when it's raining, there's no temporary pavement markers out there, and it's unsafe. You really can't tell where the road is. And then what my wife put up a couple of weeks ago is about the Quintana paving going the other direction, where there used to be a middle two-way left turn lane down the middle. That's not present right now, so it's basically people turning left from the traveled lane, and that makes that unsafe. So I'd hope that they finally get some pavement markers out there, striping to finish that off. The other thing is I wanted to bring up is a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned to you about the Los Osos Community Services District and their water resiliency intertie project. They want to tap into our main pipeline to take water, I guess, to Los Osos. They could not have pursued this without some cooperation from the City of Morrow Bay. You know, we passed Measure G back in 1991, and I believe it's binding, and that the city really does not have authorization to sell our water to them. It was a vote of the people, and I hope that you would consider the people's vote and how difficult it was for us to obtain that water in the first place. The community of Morrow Bay paid 100% of that last nine miles of that pipe to deliver our water to our town, which has been our main supply for the past 25 years. Please just don't sell it off to somebody else. Thank you.
So I'm going to just repeat some things I asked a couple of weeks ago, and I would just hope that maybe the mayor would ask that they get answered tonight. I talked about a street sign. So when you're going down Quintana, just past the off-ramp of the freeway, Highway 1, south, north, you know, and you turn into the roundabout, but you don't quite get to the roundabout because you've got to turn left on Quintana into that neighborhood. So that's Quintana, and then there's a little, just past the coffee shop, there's a little right, and you hook left onto Las Tunas. That stop sign's been gone. I have a picture of it, actually. I just noticed a picture from July, and it said, you know, Quintana this way, Las Tunas this way. And there was a stop on the pole. Well, the sign says Quintana, but it's facing Las Tunas, and the stop sign is a big, giant one on the ground on an A-frame. So I would like some answers when maybe that sign will be fixed correctly. And then the other day, I was looking for San Joaquin Street, since we're on stop signs. I couldn't find it, and I got down to Spencer's, and I called my husband and said, "Where the heck is San Joaquin?" Well, I passed it because I was looking at each street as I go down Main, and guess what? There's no street sign at San Joaquin and Main, and that's right where Chapala's is. You know where that sign is? It's a block away from Main Street. There's actually a street sign the next block. So maybe that could be rectified, too. And then my husband stole my thunder on the turn lane, business section. And also, I asked if we could get a tree street, the numbered trees, the list of numbered trees from the bike path that was done by, I can't remember the man's name, but it was done, and Greg Koelick at the time answered and said he had it, but he wasn't sure if he should put it online, and Carla suggested maybe he should. So I would like to suggest, Mayor, that you ask him to please put that online so we could look at the... And then we actually think that there's a water main still leaking where it was previously fixed in the bike path in front of Marl Shore's Motel. And it's hard to tell that it's leaking because, you know, it's been raining. But when we've had a few days of sun, everything dries out except that spot. So maybe someone could have the city look at that again and make sure it's not leaking. It's really, it's the old, whatever it's called, orange kind of pipe that's very old and brittle. So just make sure we don't have water leaking in, on that spot. Thank you.
Public comment is open. Do we have any other speakers in the House? It appears not. AGP, do we have any raised hands in the queue?
We have two raised hands. We have Carol Truesdale and Linda Winters. Carol Truesdale, you have been given permission to speak. Unmute when ready to talk.
Hi, this is Carol Truesdale. I'm a resident, born in Morro Bay since 1995, and a homeowner. I want to wish Scott Collins a very good future for him, and also personally thank him for answering my numerous emails, things come up in the city, and the things that I noticed and ideas. And he was always very instrumental in getting back to me or giving me where to go to. So thank you, Scott. I really appreciate that. However, there's one question that is still outstanding, and that is the surcharges. Where are the funds going? How much has been collected, and how are they spent? So I would hope that someone can give me those answers and actually post it so that the residents know where their surcharges are going. Thank you. And again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. Have a good evening and be safe.
All right, up next is Linda Winters. Linda, you have been given permission.
Is there anyone else? Hello?
We hear you.
Hello?
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 Hello, Linda, Linda?
Hi, I'm Linda Winters. I was planning on being there in person tonight, but as I was walking out the door, the sky opened up, and it began to rain, and I decided to do this via Zoom. I am a 29-year resident of Mobile Home Park, right here in Morro Bay. And as I've said in many of my speeches, I am a victim of four floods in 28 years, and I live adjacent to Morro Creek. It's been six weeks since the big flood on January 9th, and here we are once again facing weather patterns that could create another flood. FEMA has come in and helped those who, who apply for help, and that's a wonderful thing. And because of FEMA and all these applications, I've been pretty busy helping people to better understand what FEMA is about. With all that being said, because of that involvement, I missed two very important events that the city put on. Now, I want you to pretend that I'm standing at that podium, and the number-one event I missed was the swearing-in of our new police chief, Amy Watkins. I couldn't be more proud of you, Amy, or should I say Chief Amy. You've always had our backs in the mobile home community, and I would have loved to have met your family and told them how much you've involved, your involvement means to not only just me, but to all of us in the mobile home community. Well done, and I hope that we have many more years to come with your wonderful experience. Now, the number-two event that I missed, and please look at the podium, on the same day Chief Amy was sworn in, there was another event that happened in the afternoon, along with a tremendous amount of rain, the reception for Scott Collins as an appreciation for all of his efforts. I will also say that his efforts to get to know the people and the way that mobile home parks operate here in Morro Bay have been so important to those of us that live in mobile home parks. And just when I thought we got him well-trained, now we have to start all over again. I look forward to meeting the new city manager and starting a training session with him. Seriously, Scott, I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of the help that you've given the people in the mobile home parks and to me. And I really do look forward to meeting and having an equally good relationship with the new city manager. And I'm sorry I missed your reception since swearing-in. And now I'm going to continue to monitor the creek, but I'm doing it from at home. Thank you very much for everything that you've done.
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There is nobody else on Zoom. Hello? Check, check. Nobody else on Zoom?
AGP, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor, you.
Hello?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that, Ms. Wilson. Coming back to just address a few of these, as it's getting late already, I would encourage all of you who shared comments tonight to participate in our goal-setting workshops that will be coming up. That would be an opportunity for you to bring your ideas, your concerns, your suggestions forward, and how we incorporate them into the work plan for this community. A lot of the questions regarding infrastructure can be addressed if you reach out to your PWA members. Also, the questions about our unhoused community, the fire chief, along with other staff members in the city, are working towards opportunities for that. And I would also encourage you to reach out to Council members Ford and Barton, who are on the subcommittee for our homeless community. The questions regarding Quintana, I'm going to ask in just a minute for Mr. Koelick to very quickly talk about the striping and some of those things just on Quintana. And for those of you who have questions regarding offshore wind, we are here in Washington right now, speaking with Boem and some of the other organizations. I sit on the subcommittee and would be more than glad to meet with any of you. Please feel free to call me or email me, and I will share with you what I know at this point. And I would encourage you to find factual information, as there is a lot of misinformation out there, and that's because not a whole lot has come forward to this point. But I would be more than glad to talk to any of you with what I know so far. With that, I will ask Mr. Koelick to talk about the Quintana street markings and those questions really quick, if you could, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. Very quickly, and I appreciate the comments and feedback along Quintana. Striping was planned for this week, but we were not able to implement the striping due to the inclement weather. As far as the temporary pavement markings, that's something that our city engineer, Eric Rideo, will look into tomorrow to see if there's something we could put in, if it wasn't put in.
Thank you very much. And if I can go to Mr. Newmeyer, could you please give a just very brief share with us how the real estate in closed session is handled so that the community has an understanding of what we are and aren't doing?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to be clear, the closed session item today that was heard on 781 Market Street and 714 in Barkadero, that's simply involving the sale potentially of the property. It has nothing to do with the development of the property insofar as any permits in environmental analysis that would need to be done for any development. That would have to move through the public process. So if there was a sale of the property, the price in terms of that are what council talks about in closed session, and any possible conditions that would be put on the price in terms. As for development, if that were to occur, that would be a public process. And also, council, if they were to do a sale of the property, that purchase sale agreement, the PSA, that would come before the council at a public meeting. So there's no final decisions being made in closed session on just this potential sale of the property. And development is something that would be a public process, and it would probably play out over the course of, oh, 12 months to 36 months for development in the public arena.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. I appreciate that. And again, I'd like to encourage everyone to participate in the goal-setting, where there will be opportunities for you to share, address, help guide us and the community moving forward. And please reach out for those of you, there were so many tonight, thank you for coming out to speak. I think all of us, all five of us on council here, what you're asking, and hopefully many of us will be getting back to you as we can. With that, we will move to the consent agenda, and I will open public comment for the consent agenda, please.
I have one speaker slipped, Barry Brannan.
Thank you, Council, Barry Brannan, Morro Bay. I'd like to talk about A7. And A7 is a bunch of numbers that'll drive you nuts if you're not a number freak like I am. But there's an interesting report, the City of Morro Bay Quarterly Portfolio Performance. Quarterly Portfolio Performance. And it's a nice, big spreadsheet, and it talks about how much money our portfolio has earned. And if you look down the corner, you'll see that the weighted average of our earnings is 1.8%, which I think is pretty good in the market. But the number that really kind of jumped out at me is that we have $63,676,549 in the bank. And if you look down at the bottom of that page, it says that the investment policy was approved by the city council in June of 2021. We were right in the middle of a COVID right at that time, and there were a lot of people who were trying to figure out what to do. Our city was one of them. But the policy was that we were supposed to have six months of cash reserves. Now, if you take the enterprise funds out, the sewer and water bills, I think the city's budget is somewhere in the 14 to 15 million dollars. Is that a number that's about right? Even if it was 20 million dollars, way too much money is in this reserve fund. My question is, is this proper? Or should this money not be ratholed? Should it be used to solve some of the many problems? We talk about infrastructure. But this number jumped out at me so much that I think it needs to be looked at, because if this policy is six months, is that six-month policy? Maybe there's an answer here, but I don't understand it. Thank you.
Anyone else for comment on the consent agenda?
This is Betty Winholz. I'd like to talk about A3. I'm going to ask six questions and hope I can get six answers. This is about money that's gathered as development fees, and that's, a lot of it's sitting around. And I would like to make the following suggestions, which means I'd like for the council to pull this and discuss it. There is almost $600,000 in the streets fund, and it's earmarked to be used for the bathroom at the Rock Parking Lot. As street money, I don't think this should be used for a bathroom, and I would suggest instead that it be used for repairing city streets, which have degraded significantly over the storms of the last two months. There's also another $200,000 in the trust and agency fund that is earmarked for the 41-1 roundabout that should be used on street repairs now. And then again, there's another $650,000 in the administration fees. If you add those three numbers together, you've got $1,450,000. And we were told in the last six months by our consultant that we needed to spend $2 million a year just to stay even with our poor streets, or what he termed fair to Midland Streets. So right there, you've got three-fourths of what you need to spend for the next chunk of $2 million without having to impact the general fund. So I would hope that you would look at that and discuss that now and get some, maybe consensus on it. I would also like to point out that under the Parks section, that there's almost $300,000. And it's, part of it only is designated for some ADA access at Lila Kaiser Park. I'm assuming you've all been to Lila Kaiser. You know how awful the parking lot is. You know that there's these big concrete chunks sitting between the two lanes of parking. It's an embarrassment, and it's been like that for at least a couple of years. I think this $300,000 could easily be used for this parking lot, for its landscaping, as well as the ADA. And I don't know why it needs to sit around when it could be used to fix one of our major infrastructure problems. I only have a few seconds left, so that's all. Thanks.
Do we have any other speakers for the consent agenda? Yeah, thank you. Come on up.
I had no idea I was going to talk about this tonight. Oops. I guess I should say, my name is Natalia Mersley. After hearing them talk about how much money we have in the fund, I want to bring up a road repair I've not heard anybody talk about, and it's Little Morro Creek Road, which I use to visit some property I own out at the end of Nagano Road. And it's in horrible shape. The county road begins just past the Giannini property, which is at one of the curves on the road. But the part that the city owns is deplorable, and, you know, I feel like I'm wearing my car out every time I take it. So I hope something is done about that stretch of Little Morro Creek Road. It really needs the repairs. Thank you.
Not a financial advisor, but I can tell you, when inflation is running at the rates that it's running right now, and our return on investment is as low as it is, we would be much better served by making capital improvements in our community, because those capital improvements are only going to cost more and more, and we're not getting ahead of it with our gain on our investments. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers for the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Mayor, there's no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to council, and I will ask if anyone wants to pull items from the consent agenda.
I would like to pull out A3 and A7.
A3 and A7? And anyone else? With that, I'll ask for a motion for A1 through A8, subtracting A3 and A7.
I'd like to move that we act on the consent calendar items. Okay, tell me again. A3 through, let's see, no, we're missing A3 and A7, so all the others. Yeah, thank you, Dana.
I'll, is that, is that okay to second? Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a first and a second, and I'll just ask for a voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Landrum, A3.
Excuse me, Mayor, for the consent calendar, it would be best if we did a roll-call vote. City Clerk and I just chatted about that briefly.
Okay, well, then we'll go back to a roll-call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum? Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Ms. Swanson, with that, Councilmember Landrum, A3.
Yes, I, I would like to discuss the subject of the bathrooms, the $600,000 for the bathrooms, whether that should be used for, for streets, whether or not that should be for streets, as well as the $200,000 for the roundabout, the proposed roundabout at 41 and 1, and the $650,000 for, what's up for parks, I think. Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea to use that for streets, because they are in such bad condition, and as one speaker said, the, the roads are gonna, I mean, the price of streets repair is going to get more expensive.
So with that, I will ask Mr. Collins, are you going to take this, or would you like Mr. Qualick, or where are you going to direct this to?
Good question. There's a lot here. So, development impact fees are collected under certain brackets, or queues, or whatever you want to say, buckets. They have to be used on things that sort of account for the added new residents or businesses or population. So they're not really intended to be used on, certainly on existing infrastructure. So taking it out of a bucket for administration to put into roads probably would be improper and would be subject to potential lawsuits from those who paid into those fees, i.e. developers of projects. I'll let Chris speak a little bit more to that, but we did definitely look at this in the, under the guise of the mid-year budget, to make sure we weren't missing opportunities to, to be able to get, you know, shovels into the ground on, on certain projects. So definitely understand, when you see these numbers and all the needs that we have, we want to do our best to get out there. But there are a lot of limitations on how these funds can be spent. So I'll kick it over to the city attorney, and also Scott Graham's here, and our assistant city manager, Sarah Johnson-Rios may want to weigh in, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So it's important to understand that these funds here, these are development impact fees, which are collected specifically from developers to mitigate the impact of their development. And so they can only be used for certain projects. They, they're not like money in the general fund. The purpose of this report tonight is to comply with basically a bookkeeping law from Sacramento, AB 1600, which is that we have to bring forth a report, city staff does, on development impact fees that have been collected, and then talk about the money that's left, talk about projects that it's been used for, talk about potential projects. So this item is being brought forth for transparency, just so the public can see what money is being held by the city for DIFs, development impact fees. The intent was not to seek council direction on use of these funds, because these have not been specifically allocated to these projects. If and when they were going to be, then that would come forth in the budget or some other discussion. So Sacramento requires, under Assembly Bill 1600, these reports to be brought forward. So this is just like a snapshot in time of funds being held and potential uses of those funds, if that helps clarify the intent of this report. And when these funds are used, there's a limitation. There has to be what we call a nexus between the impact of the development and then the use of the funds. You can't just use them for any and all projects.
Okay, thank you. So they don't have to be used for, that's not committing those funds to be used for?
That's correct.
Okay.
They were assigned as potential uses, but they're not necessarily budgeted as such. But I want to make sure that's correct, because Sarah will probably know there are some that are actually budgeted to these. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. That is correct. These are, this reporting requires the city to identify potential projects that would have the nexus that the city attorney described. But any actual appropriation of funds would, would be subject to approval by council during your budget development process, and we will certainly continue to look at any eligible uses of funds that we are holding.
Okay, thank you.
To keep it simple, if we haven't used the money, we got to explain potentially what it might be used for. But it hasn't actually been set aside for that specific use.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember Landrum?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from council? And Ms. Swanson, do we need a vote on that right now, or do you want to wait till we're done with A7?
Either way works.
I'll ask for a roll call vote on A3.
I believe we need a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that would help, wouldn't it? Ask for a motion for approval of A3.
I, I move that we approve A3.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item A7. And again, Councilmember Landrum, that is for you.
So I would just like to clarify, are the reserves twice what they're supposed to What was passed in 2021? Could you just?
Thank you for the question. The total cash balance is somewhat different than the reserve policy. So that total cash balance includes all balances in all of the city's restricted and unrestricted funds, and the city has a few dozen funds, most of which are restricted as to use. So the largest ones that most members of the public are familiar with are the Water Fund and the Sewer Fund, for example. And so those are probably the largest portions of that $63 million. And then the remainder is a compilation of a number of smaller fund balances. And if members of the council or public are interested in looking at that detail, that gets updated every year in your annual comprehensive financial report, which will be coming to you sometime next month. But there's also a helpful fund balances summary page in the city's adopted budget online currently, with estimated and actual fund balances in recent years. So I will leave it at that and see if there are any more detailed questions. But the $63 million big picture is all of the city's cash balances across all funds, and includes funds, even for smaller funds that don't have reserve policies.
Okay. I, I still am having a little bit trouble understanding that, but that's probably just me.
No, I don't think it's just you. And perhaps at the mid-year budget item, which is on your agenda tonight, I'll be giving you an update, for example, on the general fund emergency reserve balance and the general fund balance, as well as all of the major fund balances. So that will give you more information and the public more information about those major funds.
Okay, so it's, it's in line with what was the, the council's, what did I say? Their, what they passed in 2021?
It is in line with that, subject to the storm recovery, basically, that we'll be discussing in the mid-year budget item.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ask for a motion, please.
Thank you for asking those questions. I think it's great to qualify, or to clarify. I move that we approve item A7.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much for that. With that, we'll move to our business items. Our first item this evening is C1, consideration of conditional appointment of Greg Carpenter as our interim city manager and conditional approval of employment agreement between the City of Morro Bay and Mr. Carpenter. And with that, I will turn it over to our human resources.
I will take this one, Councilmember, or sorry, Mayor Wixom. Yes, so staff is recommending that city council appoint Greg Carpenter, who just showed up on Zoom there, as the interim city manager contingent upon successfully passing the city's background check, and then authorize the mayor to execute the attached employment agreement following the same. So background is noted earlier today. This is my last council meeting, and I will resign my office on March 3rd, this Friday. And it's expected to take several months to run a full-scale recruitment for a replacement of this position, and so the city's in need of an interim city manager. Following notice of resignation, the council formed a council subcommittee of Mayor Wixom and Councilmember Edwards to explore options for recruiting both an interim and a permanent city manager. City staff, primarily city manager Sarah Johnson-Rios, was able to locate a candidate for interim city manager, retired El Segundo city manager Greg Carpenter. Greg has over 25 years of experience in the public sector management, both in Long Beach and El Segundo, came up through planning, including experience after retirement as the interim city manager for the City of Paso Robles a couple of years ago. And so he brings a wealth of knowledge and experience. I know him personally from, from when the time he was interim city manager. He's a really good guy. He understands the Slocow lifestyle and also Morro Bay. And I think he would fit in nicely with the city staff and help the city council provide a smooth transition to the next city manager. So he would come in at the, I believe at step five. There's just the salary compensation. There's no benefits, because he's a retiree. And with that, kick it over to the mayor and city council members for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. And thank you, Mr. Carpenter, for joining us on Zoom. Please stick around, and I will turn this over to my council members, all council members, to see if you have questions of staff or of Mr. Carpenter. And I will start down with Councilmember Landrum.
I just would like to know if we're going to, is everything going to be the same as what, what, you know, what we had with you? Like, all, all of the terms besides the, what was it, the retirement? Is that what you said?
Yeah, and if you mean by compensation?
Yes.
Yes, just salary, no, no other, no other compensation.
Well, like, does he have the same authority as you?
Yes.
So far as, like, spending amount and stuff like that? I just was wondering about that.
That's a good question, yeah. The, the job description remains the same, and the authority stated in the city policies and ordinances remain the same when he's the interim, that I would have, I've had as the permanent CM. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Barton, any questions?
No questions. I'd just like to say thank you, Scott, for conducting a, a search for someone to not take your place, but fill your seat. How's that? That's, it's so important to us to, to have someone nearby and with lots of experience. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, Sarah also.
Thank you. Questions, Councilmember Edwards?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say that, you know, thank you to Scott for going through the process with us and, and Mayor. It was, you know, it's, it's a tough thing to bring an interim person in and to know that, you know, you're, you're placing the city that you love in their hands when you've had such a good pair of hands to be in. But I, I do want to say that Mr. Carpenter comes with a wealth of background in this area, including planning, which I found to be of great interest to us with all the things that we have coming up as far as issues here with our city, and hope to learn from him. And El Segundo, where he's also served, is a very, you know, interesting community itself, if you've ever been there or get the pleasure of going there. It's a small community. It also has some areas of division within the town. It has a Chevron plant off its coastline, and it's neighborhooded by the airport. So it, it's an interesting community, and again, I hope that, you know, I welcome him.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilmember Ford?
I had all my questions answered by Mr. Carpenter. When I got to speak with him previously to this meeting, I, you know, kind of asked him his, about his knowledge of Morro Bay, and he seemed very familiar with, with our city. And as other council members and staff have mentioned, his previous roles are quite familiar with, are similar to, to what he would be doing here for Morro Bay. So I don't have any questions at this time, and I'll reserve my comments for later.
Thank you very much. And I don't have any questions at this time. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Carpenter last week for a while and have a very great conversation, so I will reserve my comments till after public comment. And with that, we will open public comment on item C1, please.
I don't have any speaker slips, and I don't see anyone coming to the podium. Do we have any raised hands in the queue, AGP?
There are no raised hands at this time.
There are no raised hands. Mayor?
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to council and ask if there's any more questions before we go to our council comments. Seeing no questions, I will go to council comments and discussion. And if there are none, any comments?
I, I have a comment, a couple of comments. First, I want to thank Sarah. I want to thank you for helping facilitate finding Mr. Carpenter and bringing him to Morro Bay for consideration. And, and I trust your expertise. And I'm going to try to get through this without crying, because I'm an emotional person, and I think you all know that. But I just want to thank Scott. Here I go. It's emotional, because I think when somebody pours their heart and soul into their job, and because they love the city and they love the people, and they dive in as, as far as Scott has dove into our city, it reflects in, in the community, the way that the community looks at Scott, our city manager. And I have to say that there's always been great comments from our community, from just the perspective that Scott is so involved, and, and your positivity is so important, and your support for each of us as council members and your staff, the reputation that you have among your staff, as well as everyone who's had to work with you, is just top-notch. And so they're big, big shoes to fill. And, and I think that based off of your recommendation and Sarah's recommendation, and just discussions with our council, that, that Mr. Carpenter, I have confidence that you're going to be able to temporarily fulfill this role. You have really high standards to follow. No pressure there. But I just, I'm thankful that you're willing to step into the role, Mr. Carpenter, and I think we're going to be in good hands. But I just want to say one more time to Scott Collins, our current city manager for a few more days. I just want to say thank you so much for your service to this community, what you've done. You've moved us forward. We're a much healthier community financially and in so many other ways, thanks to your leadership and guidance. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Any other comments? I will ask, Mr. Carpenter, is there anything before we move for a motion that you would like to interject or add to this?
Just, you know, congratulations to Scott. I'll do my best to fill his shoes. Sounds like it's going to be difficult, and based on the public comment and the amount of community involvement, it seems like there's a lot of areas to face to work on. So I look forward to working with all of you. And Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. And I appreciate your willingness to help usher us through this transition as we search for our next full-time city manager, and look forward to working with you on that. And with that, I will look for a motion from council. And with that, I will look for a motion from council to approve C1.
I'll move approval of item C1.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Carpenter. We look forward to working with you real soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C2. We are going to turn this over here in just a minute for our 2223 mid-year budget and financial update to the city manager and to admin services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson-Rios. But we do have several staff here that can answer questions for specific recommended budget adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am cognizant of the late hour on the East Coast and so, I will do my best to balance providing thorough information without taking too much of your time. So, that means I'm going to spend more time on some slides and less time on others and we can always go back to anything if you have questions. So, this is our mid-year budget report and also a fiscal outlook report for this year. I'm going to start with the fiscal outlook portion and then move into our recommended budget amendments. Broadly, this fiscal year, we're in a stable but cautious place for a few reasons. At mid-year, our revenues and expenditures current fiscal year-to-date are on track. They're where they should be for this time of year. Citywide, some of our major revenue sources are either leveling off already or projected to level off from the growth that we saw post-COVID. So, we will not continue to see the same quick growth that we've seen over the past year. And I'll talk about each major revenue source in a moment. Expenditures, however, are still growing and as we all know, inflation is continuing, although it's leveled off a bit, it is continuing. And that means that our cost to provide the same level of services and critical study services continues to increase while our revenue growth probably won't keep pace with expenditure growth in the near term. So, to get a little bit more specific, I'll go over our three main revenue sources for the, at least the general fund and the Measure E and Q fund. Sales tax is leveling off this year. So, we saw double-digit growth last fiscal year. That hasn't started to moderate and in the second half of the fiscal year, so from now until June, it's projected to begin slowing even more. This is projections coming from, most specific to Morro Bay, coming from HDL, who's the partner that we use to do our sales tax revenue projections. They are projecting a 0.6% growth in sales tax revenues in fiscal year 2324. And then, they're projecting that it'll go back up a little bit the following year to kind of our baseline levels of growth at 2% to 3%. So, that impacts a portion of the general fund revenues as well as Measure E and Q funds. And as you heard earlier this evening, there are some nuances between the different rates of growth in those funds, but they are both going to be in that, in those ballparks. The next revenue source that I'll mention is transient occupancy tax and that is the 10% that's collected, the city receives 10% that's collected on overnight visitor stays of less than 30 days. We regularly are in communication with Visit Morro Bay about this. They're regularly in communication with Visit SLO Cal regionally. And then, of course, we are receiving the TOT revenues and tracking our city receipts. We're seeing those leveling off and there are actually small declines projected regionally this year. We did budget relatively conservatively this year, so we do anticipate that revenues will come in around budget this year. We're not recommending any changes there. And we do have a new hotel that should come online and help out a bit next fiscal year, hopefully to offset some of the projected leveling off or declines there. So, no changes recommended to either of these revenue sources at mid-year, just wanting to communicate kind of a more cautionary road ahead. Property tax, those projections come from the county assessor's office. They're usually relatively accurate and they appear to be this year as well. We're not recommending any changes to the current year budget. They don't forecast those out farther than the subsequent fiscal year for us and so, next year, we're projecting somewhere between 2.5% to 3% in growth over this year. And I discussed our Measure E funds. Those are 100% local sales tax revenue. And then, harbor fund revenues, some of you likely know that those are also driven largely by sales tax revenues. So, there's a percentage of gross receipts that's built into those leases and so, a portion of the lease revenues that the harbor fund receives are also tied to the level of activity in our community and the embargadero and sales tax revenues. So, those will likely moderate, just like the sales tax revenues in the general fund and Measure Q and E will. And then, there are no planned rate increases this year for the enterprise funds and so, those rates are flat as well. On the expenditure side, our MOUs, our Memorandums of Understanding with our labor groups, have a 4% negotiated wage increase taking effect July 1, 2023. And then, that is the final year of those agreements and they will be reopened for fiscal year 2425. And then, the pension liability, that's what this visual is. It's not important for you to be able to read all of the pieces on there, but just for you to see the curve. Basically, this is the portion of the city's pension liability that's called our unfunded accrued liability or the UAL. It's primarily related to past pension debt and then, we also have a second type of payment for our current or new incurred debt each year. That one, where the current payments are much more predictable and easier to keep on top of. The unfunded liability is what has many cities in California in the same situation Morro Bay is in, which is very dependent on CalPERS's rate of returns that they're able to achieve in the market. And so, our annual payments that are required against that pension debt ebb and flow and are a bit of a moving target depending on how CalPERS is doing in the market. So, while they had a very, one year of very high gains, that was followed by a year of losses and that's going to basically undo the benefits of the year of gains and put us back in a similar boat to where we were before the spike and fall, which is that we'll see a period of 10 to 15 years with higher payments. We've been planning for this, fortunately, and council last year established a pension reserve policy and we've begun to fund a pension reserve with just over $1 million in this year's budget so that we can start to put money away in anticipation of these years of higher payments. But we have more work to do and we could have a whole study session on CalPERS. And we did, in fact, have many meetings about it last year. So, that's a continuing challenge. And then, in addition, January 9th brought us a new challenge this year. And so, we are in the process still, which you'll hear about the mid-year recommendations here, but we're in the process of still evaluating long-term costs and recovery impacts from this January 9th storm. We are, of course, going to pursue every reimbursement and insurance opportunity available to us, but there will likely still be some outlay that the city is required to fund. And so, we need to exercise caution until we have a fuller picture of what that looks like for the city. And then, of course, as we've heard from folks this evening, the city continues to have unfunded capital needs that we're attempting to address as well. So, no surprises here then. Kind of the conclusions are, again, that expenditure growth will outpace revenue growth, at least in the next couple of years. And so, for budget development, we'll be taking that into account and we are, you know, going to be working with you through the budget development process to understand what the highest priorities are. And then, with that happy news, I'm going to turn, shift gears a little bit to the mid-year budget report. This is attached to your packet. I'm just going to touch on the major, the city has five major funds and that's based on the volume of revenues and expenditures in those funds. So, it's the general fund, the Measure Q and E fund, the water fund, sewer fund and harbor fund. And I will, I will go over those this evening. If you have questions about some of the smaller funds, we can go into that if you'd like. This year is a bit different with your mid-year adjustments. We've broken them down into three categories of adjustments because of the impacts of the storm recovery. So, if you'll see here, the first category of budget adjustments that we're recommending tonight are actually actions that were approved previously by council during the fiscal year-to-date. So, the city's administrative practice has been to actually bring that back for a budget amendment at mid-year. But all of the fiscal impacts of those and directions have been incorporated into previous public documents and city council actions. That is the net expenditure of just about $140,000, so definitely the smallest number up here in these three categories. The second category is additional budget amendments that we're recommending for you to consider tonight. That citywide is a net expenditure increase recommended of about $640,000. And then, the largest category by far is our near-term storm recovery estimates. This is for work that's going to be either, that was either completed as emergency response during the day and the week of the storm or that will be completed or estimated to be completed through this fiscal year, through June 30th. So, that $1.78 million number just gets us through the kind of highest priority work. It is not the full recovery number, unfortunately, and that's still, staff's still working on that fuller picture long-term. This is going to be hard to see here, but it is in the packet. So, we've broken down the storm, the $1.8 million near-term storm recovery by category and by timeline of expenditure and I'll just leave that for reference if we need it later. And so, of course, how are we proposing to fund all three categories of proposed budget amendments? That's what this slide is addressing. This is a big-picture summary of all of the citywide changes that are recommended. They result in a total net expenditure increase of approximately $2.6 million. I think it's really critical to note, based on the fiscal outlook that I just provided you, that the vast majority of these recommended changes are one-time expenditures. They're not ongoing expenditures by and large. And in the report, we've noted for every line item, what's ongoing and what's one-time. So, what that means is, you know, we're really trying to minimize the areas of ongoing expenditure growth that we're recommending because of the cautious approach that we're taking, given where our revenues are at. However, we do have fund balance available and in the largest number up here, the general fund emergency reserve was created through years of diligence and fiscal prudence to be able to address emergencies such as the storm. And so, we think it is appropriate to utilize available fund balance to address some of these, certainly storm recovery and some of these higher priority items here that are one-time expenditures. So, you'll see the vast majority of that $2.6 million would come from the general fund emergency reserve. It's about $1.5 million, followed by ranging .1 to .4 million from the other fund balances. And in the general fund, and I guess I should say, Mayor, if you'd like me to pause for questions anywhere in the presentation, I'd be happy to do that or I can just finish and take questions at the end. I'll keep going unless you'd like to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Rios. I'll refer to my fellow council members. Does anyone have questions right now or would you like her to continue to move forward?
I have two questions. One is with the sales tax leveling off, does it, so if everything is getting more expensive, doesn't that just make the sales tax kind of go up?
It's a good question. There's a lot of factors at play in the forecast that HDL provides. So, while it costs us more money to buy a given thing and therefore generates a tiny bit more sales tax, people are moderating their consumption because of inflation and so, that's having an offsetting impact. And, you know, that's at a national level, in part, what the Fed was trying to do with the inflation increases was to start to slow down spending and consumption and we're seeing that start to happen.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other one is there, when will we know how much those numbers will be for the storm repair? Is there any estimate of when we would know that?
That's a great question. I think that's going to depend on staff from a number of departments and it's going to depend on what we hear from our federal and state aid folks in terms of what reimbursement we would be eligible for as well as our insurance. So, it will probably take many months to have a full picture. We can certainly continue to update you along the way. I'm sure we will be updating you during the budget development process on what we know then. And I would venture to guess that we would still have changes even after budget adoption because some of the governmental assistance takes a long time to work through.
And the second part to that is when will we know the total amount of our, that we've, you know, the total damage? Because it sounds like we don't know that yet, is that right? We haven't assessed that?
We have assessed that, you know, kind of at a high level and it's in the $15 to $20 million range. And then, the question is, you know, how much of that do we go after now, depending upon what we hear from FEMA and state aid, primarily FEMA and insurance, may dictate which projects we pursue and the others we may have to hold off on because we don't have that money in the bank.
Okay. So, that $15 to $20 million isn't in this at all?
That, it's, yeah, it's discussed insofar as that's a number we think is around the right range, but as far as what we're going to spend now, it's that $1.8 million figure. But we anticipate that number's going to keep going up, but we're going to keep coming back to council to get authorization as we, as we see fit, you know, to recommend to you all. Again, this will be an ongoing process with FEMA. You know, I know our delegation went out to DC to talk to them, but they're not taking folks right now. They want to revert us back to their regional folks, so I think this is going to be a long process. But how much is actually spent will be dictated by a lot of factors like Sarah's mentioned.
Okay. And we, but we've applied for the $15 to $20 million?
We are, yeah, we are in the process. It's a, you know, it's a dance. Here's our preliminary estimates. Okay, now, we need backup information upon backup information and the same process for our insurance company. And so, there's deductibles that kick in for projects that we need, you know, work done on. And then, we try to, try to work both of those to pay for as much as you can so that we aren't left holding the bag for projects.
Okay. So, the $1.78 is just like the immediate things?
It's primarily the, it's the cleanup efforts and then, there were some equipment that we know for sure what the value was and complete losses and so, that's part of this as well. And we hope that some of that would be reimbursed almost immediately by our insurance company. So, some of that could be part of that, but most of it is just the immediate cleanup effort.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Otherwise, I will turn it back over to Ms. Johnson-Rios. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, next, we will look at the general fund and specifically at the recommended changes. Well, first, where we're at fiscal year-to-date and then, the recommended changes to the general fund at mid-year. The fund overall is on track. Revenues and expenditures are on track fiscal year-to-date. This just shows you the big picture here. We've received 49% of We've received 49% of our revenues as of January 31st. So there's about a one to two month lag with some of our revenue sources. So that would be just what we would expect through January. And then we're right on target at 56% of expenditure spent through January. And we've already discussed the, the major general fund revenue sources. This is just showing you that we've got, you know, three to four revenue sources that really make up the, the bulk of the general fund revenues. The ones that I have not touched on yet are, are charges for service and then just all the other smaller revenue sources. Those are stable. So those are things like charges for recreation classes and programs, for planning fees, I'm sorry, permitting activity, cannabis revenues, business license revenues. There are no large anomalies. And so we're not recommending any changes during the current fiscal year to general fund revenues. Things are, on the whole, coming in as we would anticipate. On the expenditure side, as I mentioned, things are also on track. We have tables in here. Again, I can go back to these for reference if you'd like. Expenditures by type and expenditures by department. So you can see where things are at as of January. But on the whole, on the fund, we are right where we need to be. And so then I'm moving into the changes here. For each fund, we've got a slide kind of summarizing the changes for that fund within the three categories. And I have to apologize, I'm sitting far enough back from the screen that I can't, I can't quite make this out. So I think we've got bottom line here, about $460,000 of net impact to the general fund at mid-year. And so we would recommend that, that that would come from the available general fund balance. That would leave approximately $3.7 million in estimated general fund balance if you were to accept these changes. And then under the pension reserve policy last year, we would recommend putting a portion of that towards the pension liability as part of your next year's budget development process, which would still leave between $2 and $3 million in general fund balance. That's not even, including the general fund emergency reserve, which is held in a separate fund per that reserve policy that was asked about before. If the budget amendments are approved tonight as presented for storm recovery, then we would have approximately $3.9 million remaining in the general fund emergency reserve balance. And that equates to roughly 23% to 25% of the current year adopted general fund operating budget. So that would fall just below the council threshold of 33%, which would mean that we would be doing this, this dance, as the city manager called it, of trying to understand what we can get reimbursed for, even for this preliminary $1.8 million in expenditures. And of course, trying to rebuild the general fund emergency reserve when that reimbursement comes through. But between the general fund balance itself and the general fund emergency reserve balance, you would still have healthy reserves available between those funds. And then there are also a number of smaller general funds that have reserves, such as the vehicle replacement fund, the facilities maintenance fund, and all of those are outlined in the adopted budget. So that, all of those small funds together are what get compiled to make up that cash balance, which is just a snapshot of the money that we have in the bank at any given time. And of course, we're also spending money for operations. So a little extra there to try to get at the reserve question. I'll keep moving. We have detailed tables in here that I will leave here for reference if you'd like to ask questions about them. This first one, number one, is that first category of general fund expenditure amendments that council previously approved fiscal year-to-date. The second, and that's number one continued, the second category is the additional general fund expenditure amendments that we're recommending tonight. There are a variety of types of amendments here. Some include one-time payouts for retirements that the city doesn't have a practice of budgeting. So if there's a year like this year where we have a number of retirees that have served for a while with the city, that's why we have to come to you with these budget amendments because those are difficult to plan and to, to budget for in advance. And then we've got a number of one-time increases. We've got one in there, for example, for a developer impact fee study, which would update the development impact fees that were on your agenda earlier tonight as well. And a number of other smaller amendments on the list. And then the third category is the storm recovery. It's going to be hard to see this in PowerPoint form, but it is all in your, in your packet. And if I were to go through each of these, we'd be here way too long. So the, the types of storm recoveries that's needed are also, that's why we did that summary table, to give you a better picture of, you know, that was sludge removal, it's emergency facility repair, it's equipment replacement for damaged equipment, it's vehicle replacement for damaged vehicles. So it really runs the gamut of types of expenditures that are related to that, to storm recovery. And we can certainly answer questions that you may have. And then this is capital-related expenditures. So in, in line with city policy, anything that is going to create a capital asset and expend more than $50,000 is put into our, our capital fund. And that's where we've divided the operating from capital for storm recovery. This is just showing the revenue offsets on the general fund. So we are getting back, for example, we know already that we're getting some insurance money for one of the vehicles that was damaged in the storm. We know that we'll be getting some funding back from the Iron Man event, for example. And so we've got miscellaneous revenues here that are offsetting the expenditure adjustments. On Measure Q and E, this is a much shorter list. For reference, these are the priority expenditure areas. And Mr. Peck mentioned these earlier tonight. This is just what we are able to spend Measure Q and E funds on. These are council-set priorities as of April 2021. And that fund is also doing very well, on track. Revenues are right on track with that lag in timing, as I mentioned. That's about what we would expect to see at this time of year. And expenditures are also exactly on track for seven months of the fiscal year. This shows you expenditures by department as of mid-year. And there are some anomalies there just due to encumbrances and the timing of expenditures in certain departments. But overall, the fund is, is right on track. And so this is a list of recommended expenditure budget changes in Q and E. And you can see that by department. I think all but 11,000 of these are also one-time expenditures. And so we're not recommending any major changes to the fund. That only represents about 2.9%, I think, of the overall fund budget in that case. So a pretty small recommended change there. And then in this case, we are actually recommending increasing the revenue budget this year for Measure E sales tax revenue. That's because there are some anomalies to the, some differences in the local sales tax versus the Bradley Burns tax, which is what goes into the general fund. And in talking with HDL, we have a little bit more room in their projection for the current fiscal year to increase the revenue budget in Q and E than we do in, in the general fund. That's in part because people are continuing to buy cars. And so we don't have a car dealership here, so we don't get the portion of the sales tax that's based on point of sale, where you, where the, the item is purchased. But we do get a portion, the local sales tax that comes in, based on where the buyer lives. So that's one concrete example of where we are getting a little bit more revenue from Q and E than on the Bradley Burns side. So that would fully offset, we're recommending essentially that the revenue increase would fully offset the expenditure increase in the Measure Q and E fund. So no change to fund balance. And then I'll go quickly through just the three enterprise funds, starting with Harbor. Harbor had a really great operating surplus last fiscal year, and these are unaudited numbers, but we're estimating about .7 million of operating surplus last year for Harbor. And that's again because of the sales tax peak that we saw after the COVID recovery. That's not likely going to be an ongoing level of operating surplus for them. But it's a great number that helps build their fund balance, which is about $1 million right now. So we are recommending some expenditure changes here, and that would take that fund balance to about .8 million if, if we proceed with those tonight. They're on track for their expenditures as well and their revenues. A lot of them come in at the end of the fiscal year because of the structure of that percent rent. So that's why it's only collected 17% year-to-date. And I described here the, the recommended use of .2 million and what that, that does to the fund balance doesn't change really the, the big picture for the Harbor fund all that much. They're recommending some appropriations for building improvements, also a retirement distribution there for the outgoing Harbor Director. Those are the largest items there. And very small preliminary storm recovery. So we, we know we will certainly have additional Harbor-related storm recovery numbers that will be coming to you as soon as we have more information about those. In the water fund, the working capital definition or the spendable fund balance is about 5.4 million. That's an unaudited number, but that's what it's looking like now. And so a very healthy fund balance there, which of course is planned to be used for capital expenditures. And so the mid-year appropriations in the water fund are recommended primarily to address storm recovery in this case. We have some small recommendations to increase overtime and standby pay because of the new water reclamation facility coming online and because of storm response. But largely, the 281,000 is related to preliminary storm recovery. In the sewer fund, I think even larger fund balance there of about 17 and a half million. That's an unaudited number. That's basically spendable fund balance. And again, that is planned for capital expenditures. So they are right on track of where they should be also at, at mid-year this year in terms of revenues and expenditures year-to-date. And even smaller recommended changes here, also to address the same staffing increases due to bringing the water reclamation facility online and responding to the storm event. And then the previously approved item was the appraisal associated with the old wastewater treatment plant facility. And lastly, the transit operating and capital fund. These changes here reflect council approval to add additional rural transit grant award funds and park transit hub funds for the park transit hub project that you reviewed recently, and a recognition of $125,000 roughly in grant funds that's just not yet been budgeted. That is the end of the, of the charts that I've got in here for you, although I still have even more charts for reference if you'd like to ask questions. And then I do just want to remind you and the public about the next steps in the budget development process for 2324. That was also a council item in January to approve the budget schedule. So those, we will be working almost immediately internally on starting budget development work, which will be informed by your council goals process. And we will be going to CFAC and then council in May with the proposed 2324 budget. And you'll hear these themes that we've started tonight, and we'll be seeking your input. And with that, the recommendations before you tonight are to receive the fiscal outlook, receive, and I believe that should say, approve the, yes, there it is, and approve the resolution authorizing the attached budget amendments. And I'm available for questions, as are the other department directors and staff, if you have questions on specific recommended changes.
Thank you very much for that update. That's a lot. With that, I will turn it over for more council questions before we go to public comment. Start at the other end. Councilmember Ford, questions?
I want to thank you, Sarah, for this comprehensive report, as well as your coworkers who helped prepare it. I, you know, reading through it, the questions that came up have pretty much been answered tonight, although I would like for you to, if you could just remind us of the Iron Man contribution, or the, the money coming in for that, how that works?
Certainly. The Iron Man contract allows for the Iron Man event to reimburse the city for up to $20,000 in city expenditures for the event. And then there's a contribution that comes from Visit Morro Bay directly to the event as well. That's, that's not coming from the city.
Okay. That's the only thing I have, so I'll go ahead and reserve the rest of the time for the other council members.
I don't have anything at this moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
I'm just curious whether, is this already on the, the website or something like, maybe a, a smaller version of this? Is that, so people can see it?
Certainly, it's in the council agenda packet, but we will post the report portion of it on the website.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum, questions?
I wanted to get a little more clarity about what Mr. Peck said about the, the concerns about the long-term Q and E commitments, if you could interpret that for me?
Certainly. And I'm looking at the city attorney because I want to stick to the agendized item, but I...
Oh, oh, that's not, I mean, isn't that going to be a future, like, consideration? He mentioned it, so I was just wondering.
Sure. Yeah, I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Peck, but a point of discussion at CFAC has been to review the, the portion of expenditures that's dedicated to capital versus operating expenditures and to ensure that through a forecast process that they have a clear understanding of, for example, as I described tonight, if our revenues and expenditures are growing at different rates, what that may do to the long-term health of the fund and the balance of what would be appropriated for operating versus capital commitments.
Okay. And then I guess, I think this is for Mr. Qualick. Is he here?
Yes.
So I was just curious about the wood chips, replacing wood chips for $50,000 for each park? That just sounds like a lot of money. Or wood chips.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. Let me just, if you don't mind, look at that page so I can see it. If you have the page number...
10?
10.
Page 10.
So it looks like that 50,000 is, also includes silt removal. And just from experience with this storm, that, that removal can be very expensive. So I can, I can follow up on that offline if, if desired and get some more detail on, on those expenditures. But I suspect that the majority of the funding there would be for the silt removal. And the wood chips are relatively a minor expense, like $3,000 or $4,000.
And then also, it just seems a little ironic to, to pay, oh, for sand, yeah, $3,500 for sand. I thought maybe I read it wrong. It was for the sandbags, but it's actually for the sand. And we really shouldn't have to pay for sand here.
So we have deliveries of sand that are dropped off at locations that were, so that the sand was made available to community members. And so we, we contract that out to companies to come to... And so we contract that out to companies to come do that for us.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? No other questions, I will turn it over for public comment on item C2.
And I don't have any speaker slips. I see Mr. Donnelly coming up.
Evening again. I just had a question about the financing for the water reclamation facility, and what our annual obligations are to pay back, I believe it's just five loans, and whether or not the revenue that we collect exceeds those obligations, and whether or not we can get a reduction in our water and sewer rates sometime soon. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Ms. Johnson-Rios, is that a question for you regarding the rate on that, or is that for Mr. Qualick?
I can take it, and he can add if he would like.
Thank you.
The current WRF surcharge and rate structure will cover the debt service that the city will be required to pay on the low-interest loans on the water reclamation facility project. So we don't anticipate that that project or the debt service on that project would trigger rate increases specifically.
Thank you very much for that. And I'm sorry, Ms. Swanson, do we have anyone else for public comment, or anyone on AGP queue?
Hey, GP, do we have any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
No raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll bring it back to council for more questions or comments. I can start down there with you, Councilmember Ford, if you'd like.
I don't have any other questions at this time. I'm just, again, thankful to our staff, our well-qualified staff, for creating such a great document report.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you for the report.
Councilmember Barton?
Ditto on Councilmember Ford's comments. I so appreciate Sarah and her staff for making this so readable, so clear, so crisp. It really helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I appreciate all the information here as well. I do, I am curious about on, maybe it'd be easier if I give you the page number, page 17, the VFD charge, and then the one beneath that as well, and then like the computer If those are storm recovery, I would probably ask Mr. Qualick if he's able to respond.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Johnson-Rios and Councilmember Landrum. The VFD, I believe, is some worst data equipment that helps control valves around the city for water and sewer, and also aspects of the new treatment plant and other facilities that we have around town related to water and sewer did get flooded and had to be replaced. And what was the, what was the other one?
The one right below that, the product water HMI, and then all the computer stuff, too.
Yeah, I would have to check on that. It's obviously all related to the flood, and I suspect that it was involved in either the RO facility being flooded or the old wastewater treatment plant being flooded. But I don't have details about all of these for you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Councilmember Landrum?
No, that's all I've had.
Opening up to council for any comments?
Mayor, if no one else has any questions, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolutions, number 11 through 23, authorizing the attached budget amendments. I believe that's all we're passing tonight.
Got a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you for the motion and the second, and for just public comment because I didn't get a chance to interject. I would share that I appreciate all the work and effort that the Finance Department has put into this. Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Rios, and all of staff who's contributed. I know that while we are here in Washington, we were not given the opportunity to meet with FEMA. Those applications have been submitted. I know that it's ongoing, still uncovering more expenses and needs, but they have submitted. And after speaking with our representatives in Senator Feinstein and Padilla's office, as well as Carvahal's office, you know, we were assured that federal and state disaster money would be made available. And so I'm hopeful that a lot of this that we are putting out in expenditures to address will be recovered through those funding sources. Unfortunately, it does take time, and I'm sure that we will provide updates to the community as the council and staff receive them, will have noticed for refunds that are significant for us to track and see where we're at. So thank you. And with that, I will turn it back over. We have a motion and a second, and if there's any other comments. If not, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixom?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and thank you again to the Finance Department and all of staff for your work on this. Appreciate it. Do council members, do you want to push on to C3, or do you want to take a five-minute break?
Can we make it like a quick three?
Three minutes it is. Thank you.
I want to move on, but I do need to, you know, okay.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is everyone ready? Thank you. We'll move on to our last item, seat three. Approval of the WORF contract amendments. Authorize an increase in Anvil contract budget review comment in fiscal year 2023 quarter. Mr. Colick.
Thank you, Mayor Wixom, and quickly I did get some detail about council member Landrum's questions at the end of the last item from our utilities division manager, Damaris Hansen. And I wanted to clarify that the VFC device is a variable frequency drive that's part of one of our high school water wells that got filled with water and fried and has to be replaced. All the other items below that were lost in not only the flooding that happened in the reverse osmosis plant, as I mentioned, but also due to the on and off of electricity that was harmful to some of our sensitive components. So the HMI actually happens to be the screen that is on the RO that serves as an interface for controlling that system. So I just wanted to clarify that. And with that said, council before you, you have an item to review the WORF quarterly reports to approve some change orders, approve of contract amendments, and approve of contracts. And so I will let our WORF program manager, Paul Amico, give a presentation. And part of that presentation will be a very short presentation by project manager Daniel Heimel, who is managing the recycled water component of the project. But first we'll start with Paul. And Paul will come up to the podium again.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I think this is the first time I've been in front of this council. So my name is Paul Amico. I am the WORF program manager. So congratulations or condolences on your seats. I don't know which one. Chief Watkins, congratulations on your position. We've been working quite a bit together on the pipeline projects. And finally, Scott, good luck. Thanks. Developed a great relationship with Scott through the years on the project. Really appreciate your leadership and how you showed up every time when I would call. And Scott, he always knew it was bad news. So don't like being that guy, but unfortunately, that's the position that I'm in. So as I normally do with the quarterly report updates, we say it's kind of weird to give you a report about something that happened eight weeks ago. This is the process we go through. We gather financial information. We pull it all into a report format. Again, I think I've acknowledged in the past, council member, former council member Heller's leadership on this. We greatly appreciate the consolidation of the report and the streamlining of the report. It makes it much easier for us to present it. We believe it's much clearer. So we really appreciate that. So we take the information in, we put it in all the buckets, and we report on it. But as I like to normally do, I do a construction update before going into the quarterly report, and then we'll spend some time on the contract amendments. We'll move through the first part pretty quickly. Again, really weird to give you an update about something that happened eight weeks ago, but we're done. No, I'm kidding. We're almost done. Major construction has been completed. We had the completion event last week. I think Mr. Heimel pointed out that we had the open house. And so that was a very exciting, very exciting milestone for the for the community, as I know, but certainly for the project team. And now the hard work begins, as they say, for the city's operations staff. So we are very excited to have been able to hand that over to city staff, and we're working diligently through punch list items, and I'll explain what those are in a little while. So pictures here, just over the last quarter, the manhole junction structure on the right, right-hand side of the screen, pump station B over by Lemos, and then making the connection into what we call the air relief structure. So the treated effluent pipe that connects to the pipe that goes to the ocean. There's the pipe bridge on the left, and then pump station A, nice artistic shot with the paving and the rocks in the background. And then hopefully, everyone got to tour the Water Resources Center. This is the actual heart of the center, Water Resources Center here, the treatment processes, the right middle, the center of the screen there, the biological process. So the water goes through the bottom, and the solids go out the top on this picture. So what is substantial completion? Earlier this month, we, the city and Philance Black and Beach reached a contractual milestone. This is a contractually defined milestone where the city has received beneficial use of the facility. That doesn't mean that there may not be work items remaining, or that there aren't work items remaining. Some of those even may be significant. But what this is, is a contract milestone that allows the city to take what we say it's available for its intended use. We take all the remaining work items, and we move those to what we call a punch list. And then what that agreement on the punch list, that triggers agreement for us to sit down and agree on that punch list. And then at and at that point, we release a certain amount of retention. So all along through the contract, we retained 5% of every invoice in what we call retention, and that's there to keep the contractor at the table, if you will, to finish the job so they can get 5% of their money. Once we agree on the punch list, then we retain a certain percentage of that retention, but we release most of it. So the last thing we need to do is sit down and agree on that final punch list. As we have been moving through that, I got some emails today. I didn't actually get a chance to review. And as of today, we are pretty well through that process. So again, moving this forward, trying to achieve final completion of the Water Resources Center. We've run into some issues with the testing of the drinking water system. The Division of Drinking Water has changed some of the moved the goalposts a little bit on us and the city, or the city and Philance Black and Beach. And so we're working through those. We'll be doing some testing in four different phases. First two phases will take place next week and the week after. Then there'll be a gap. Division of Drinking Water will go away, analyze data, and then later in the year, they'll come back and finish the testing. Current projection is that that testing would get completed sometime in May or June. And then, once that's achieved, then the facility would be finally complete. Turning our attention to the conveyance facilities. Pipelines and pump stations were ready and pumping wastewater in October, when the Water Resources Center was started up. As you all know, having lived through the paving process, which is like painting your house after you get everything done, after living through that, in the next few days, we anticipate to receive a notice from Anvil that they believe themselves to be substantially complete with the work. And that would be, that's a big milestone for us as well. They have been working through the punch list. We have general agreement on it at this point. In fact, I have a call tomorrow morning to review some additional change orders and other to also talk about punch lists. So as we're reporting on this, we are going day by day on this project and getting it moved toward final completion. We've been told by Anvil, they hope to be out of town, and no more Anvil trucks in town by the end of March. So that's a big milestone, I think, for everyone, including Anvil. One item that has come up in the past, and we have talked about a couple of different times at council, is the bike path restoration. The bike path was moving toward completion, and then, as you've talked quite a bit this evening, the flood happened, and that set some things back and set some things behind. They had quite a bit of cleanup to do on the bike path, not just in the area between Main Street and Morro Creek, but also north of that area. Deposited a lot of muck on the bike path. So it set them back from being able to get that open. As we had talked about in the past, we want to reserve a lane along the new bike path easement to be able to construct the future IPR wells and those pipelines. So there will be trees planted that will replace the trees that were taken out. And then the final landscape plan, I think that is mostly complete at this point in time, and will be ready in a future meeting when staff and WORF subcommittee decide for us to come back and have a more in-depth discussion about what the long-term plans for that are. Anticipating that full restoration of the bike path would take place once the IPR, that would be put in the IPR contract. So that contractor would get everything cleaned up and restored at that time. The restoration that would take place right now would just be to cede the bike path that's there and replace the trees that were taken out from pipeline construction. But future, you know, ornamental shrubs and benches and all those other things, that would be for a future discussion, and then a future plan and future restoration. Any questions before I move into the quarterly report update, which should be pretty brief?
I do. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate your reports, as always. I have a question regarding, I know we talked about this before, and regarding the trees and that sort of thing. I know that you said there's a long-term plan for filling in the shrubs and other things like benches and whatnot. But it was asked before by a constituent, that if we were going to take in community input on that landscape, is that still, do you know if that's part of the plan, or is that something that we'll look at further down the road?
I think I would defer to staff on that, and what staff's interest and desires would be that on WORF subcommittee. But we're ready to have that discussion at any time. I just need to get a better, I don't love this particular sketch. I want to get something a little better and a little more understandable by the public. We'd like to get some additional pictures. So we've got to work with the landscape architect and see what we could potentially put together. But we're allowed to do that at any time.
Okay. Yeah. And the reason I bring that up is because I love getting input from those who use the path, right? And so it's great to have somebody design it, but also to get that input, I think, is important. So.
Yeah. And we're excited to get that.
And I'll just add, this is great, Public Works Director, I'll just add that it will first be going to the Public Works Advisory Board for review, and that will provide the public an opportunity to provide input on this plan.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Colick.
Thank you. I would like to know when the bike path is going to be open. Did you already say that, maybe?
I did not say that, and I have to confess, I don't exactly know. So the bike path between Main Street and the pipe bridge, we have to get it all open, right? And so that you can't just open a piece of it, because then it's kind of the bike path to nowhere. The path north of the pipe bridge in Wilekheiser Park, as I said, got pretty heavily impacted by the flood. It had a ton of muck deposited on it. There's also still some construction activity on the end of the pipe bridge, and they have to repair that that area of the bike path. It got a little torn up during construction. So they've got to make those repairs. Obviously, we've been set back by the weather, much like the road striping we've done. So I will work to get a date for reopening what we're targeting, certainly by the end of March, because that's when Anvil wants to be out of town. And we want to, we would like to get it open as soon as possible. What we can do is, we'll find out, I'll find out from the contractor. They may shrug and say, we don't know. It depends on when we can get in there, when the weather permits. So we'll have to work on that.
Yeah. When was it supposed to be done?
I appreciate that question. I personally made a big mistake and said the end of September because I was wildly optimistic. But here we are, and still close. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, great. Moving on to the quarterly report update. I'll do a piece of it. I'm going to ask Mr. Heimel to come up on the schedule slide. He can give an update on the recycled water facility, because that's really related to the schedule. And then I'll come back. We'll kind of tag team the rest of the presentation. We submitted this to the city at the end of February, or the beginning of February, took it to PWA, middle of February, as we normally do before we come here. At this point in time, the total spending through the second quarter of 2020 fiscal year 2023 was $128.8 million, and that's against a budget of $159.8 million. As we normally do, we present accomplishments, challenges, and upcoming activities, which I've largely covered in the presentation thus far. Schedule overview, as we said, as I said, for the water reclamation, or the Water Resources Center and for conveyance, we're aiming to get those done as quickly as we can. Anvil wants out of town by the end of March, and then we'll do final closeout, probably a month or so after that. And then, as we said, on the Water Resources Center itself is somewhat impacted by the DDW, our Division of Drinking Water, testing that has to take place.
Yeah. So just briefly, with respect to the recycled water facilities component of the project's schedule, the critical path has been construction and testing of injection well number one. And so I'm happy to report, and I think I can say this because it occurred in this quarter's quarterly report, that that work has been completed. Injection well number one was constructed and then successfully tested with potable water from the city's drinking water system. The city doesn't have a permit to put recycled water in that injection well yet, but it does have an ASR permit, Aqua Storage and Recharge permit, to put potable water in there. And so we were able to do that, get estimates of travel time as well as anticipated water quality impacts. And so that is critical information that allows us to proceed with the rest of the schedule for the recycled water facilities. The hydrogeologist team is taking that information, they will be, and are preparing what we're calling their basis of design report, and that is the report that will outline where they recommend the injection wells be located to maximize the benefit of this critical water resource for the city of Morro Bay. With that recommendation, then we will be proceeding down the permitting and design for the injection wells and the pipelines to feed advanced purified water to those wells, and then look to bring the program online in 2025. Questions on that before I hand it back over to Mr. Amico?
Any questions, anyone?
I just had a bit of a hard time hearing you. So, sorry.
Sorry about that. I'll get closer to the mic. We need to tell our mics.
And I'm, it's all right. I don't want you to have to say it all again. No, I'm tired. Maybe you can provide your contact information to, if there's questions or something.
Definitely. Yeah, there's follow-up questions about the recycled water schedule and program. I'd be happy to address those.
Okay, now I remember. You were talking about the IPR, and so when is it going to be, like, what's the timeline? Do you have a, like, a timeline completion of all of this, or?
Yeah. So the current projection is to bring the IPR program online in 2025. However, I will state that, again, the test injection well and the injection test, and hopefully I can state it so you can hear me this time, has been the critical path to getting the IPR program, recycled water program moving forward. We've completed some critical milestones recently in the last quarterly report, and we're moving forward with that. There have been some delays in getting that injection well constructed, and that really has been associated around being able to get a driller to bid and come out and construct the project. You know, the drought that we were in in 2020 to 2022 put extensive demand on water resources, and drilling contractors had been incredibly busy, and we had a challenge enticing them to come out and bid and construct an injection well. So we're still feeling the impact of that delay a bit in the overall program schedule, but happy to report that with the completion of the injection well and the injection tests, that we're back on track and moving forward.
And we don't know how many more wells need to be drilled, or like where they're going to be, or how deep they need to be, anything like that?
We do have certain pieces of that information. We know the capacity of injection well number one, and so we can extrapolate how many additional wells we would need to inject the amount of advanced purified water that the city can currently produce. And so we're estimating a total of four to five wells at this point, based on the information we have on hand. Where those wells will be located, that information will be coming forth in the basis of design report. And I forgot the last piece.
How deep?
How deep? The wells, we have a sense for how deep they're going to be. The middle basin is not, as basins go, a very deep basin. So injection well number one was constructed to a depth of approximately 90 feet. So we would anticipate the other wells would be constructed to a similar depth. However, you know, you don't really know how you're exactly going to construct that well until you punch the first hole. So, you know, but we would anticipate them to be a similar orientation or configuration to injection well number one.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Heimel, right now? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Okay, just one, I think one last thing, but just to tie the two projects together. The four phases of DDW, Division of Drinking Water, testing at the Water Resources Center are the last, they will produce an engineering report, then that the Division of Drinking Water uses when that testing is completed in order to permit the entire facility. So this is the testing that we're doing at the Water Resources Center is the first step toward getting the final permit issued for injection.
So was there, is there a permit to do the wells? Like, it's all been permitted, or?
The construction permit for the wells would be obtained at the time of construction. So to actually permit those through the, I don't know that, specifically know that process, but it would be, there is a permit to construct a well, just like you would construct any well in the county.
And there's no design yet for any of this?
Mm-mm. That's what the work, Mr. Heimel's doing, is to develop the basis of design.
And they didn't need to have a design to get that grant, that last grant?
To get the grant, no, the city didn't have to have a final design. You know, we outlined where the project was in its lifecycle, in the application to the funding agency, and, you know, that was sufficient to get the grant. In terms of the permitting process in front of us, the city has, and there's a lot of permits, but, you know, one of the critical ones is the coastal development permit. And so the city has a coastal development permit that largely covers the whole WORF program. However, in the implementation of the program, what the city has done, both through the treatment facility and conveyance, has broken it into pieces. And so those two pieces have had their special condition reports prepared. There's a construction plan. There's a design plan that gets prepared for each component of that larger program, submitted to Coastal Commission for their review and approval. And then with that approval, those components can proceed to construction. And so we will be going through a similar process with the recycled water facilities, with the basis of design report. Then we will then develop the final design that will be submitted to the Coastal Commission as a special condition, reviewed, and then approved. And then the city would be allowed to proceed with the constructions of those components, the recycled water components of the overall program.
Okay. And then, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself about, I think it's, are we talking about the amendments yet, or not? Have we, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's another question. We can talk about amendments. Okay, great. So the first set of amendments, I'll try to move through these pretty quickly. I'm going to take these one by one, and then ask for any questions that you may have for each one of these items. Amendment number seven for Anvil Builders includes seven items totaling $124,700. The first item is related to dewatering at pump station A. When we dig deep excavations, particularly in areas near the beach, they're subject to pretty high groundwater conditions. The design did contemplate that these groundwater conditions would be present, and we had decided during design that that dewatering water could be sent to the existing treatment plant. The trick with this is that the contractor's responsible then for designing the shoring system and the pumping system that goes with that dewatering. And those are two pieces of an integrated design, and that's the responsibility of the contractor. It's their responsibility because it's their means and It's their responsibility because it's their means and methods of construction, and it's their ability to protect the people working in those excavations. The exact configuration of the excavation, how they chose to do that work, that is really on them. And so when they produced that design and they showed us that, the design, the volume of water that they were going to discharge, city operations staff was concerned that it would impact operations of the existing wastewater treatment plant down on Atascadero Road. That also is a biological process, so groundwater is clean. We need to maintain that biology. They were concerned that it would create process upsets and wash the biology off the filters that were there, the biofilters. So we needed to take a different course of action during construction, and the city needed to obtain an actual discharge permit so we could discharge that dewatering water to the ocean. This all occurred in mid-2021, and we just now got all the charges in from Anvil and all this stuff. So it seems a little odd that we're talking about excavation for a pump station that's been completed for several months, but we finally got all of their pricing and all of their invoices for that work. There are three main components included in this. There's the analytical work, because when you get a discharge permit, you have to report on the constituents that you're discharging. This discharged water went through the old power plant outfall that the Brackish RO system, the city's Brackish RO system, used to go through out by the rock. And so we had to do analytical work and lab work related to that. That was about $27,000 of these costs. There was the shoring rental, because we had to shore the excavation where we tied into that existing pipeline that went out to that outfall. That was about $20,000 of this cost. And then about $9,000 of it was other incidentals related to the actual connection, the piping, the fittings, and different things like that. So that's what's included in this, $55,800, just shy of $56,000. And I can take any questions on this item.
And Paul, I'd like to add that the city did explore the option, an alternative option of discharging that water from the dewatering operation into the creek and/or into a storm drain, and the regional water board did not permit that. And that's why we had to go to that outfall.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
So, wait, you're saying the company knew that the groundwater was low?
High.
High.
Very high groundwater.
High.
Yeah, we knew that from the geotechnical report and also its location near the ocean.
So, and so wouldn't they have known that all of this would have happened, or the dewatering was necessary, or?
Yeah, and that was included in the design, but the specific design of the system, the dewatering system, the pumps, the shoring, all that stuff goes together, and that's on the contractor to design that system so they can protect their workers. And so we knew there was water that was going to be discharged, and we thought it could go to the old plant. But when we saw their design, operations staff concluded that it would not be good for the old plant to receive that water. And so we needed to seek a different place to discharge the water.
Okay.
Next item. Additional project signage costs. This is, I believe, the second change order we've brought to council for additional signage costs. We did have an allocation of signage, for special signage that wasn't incidental to the traffic control work. We had had an allocation for that amount of money, and due to the number of signs that we asked Anvil to sprinkle all over town, they ended up depleting that initial budget. We've backfilled this budget once, and then this is the final backfilling of that budget to pay for additional signage. These are signs that say things like, you know, businesses open during construction. There were lots of signs along Quintana, Rough Road, and, you know, steel plates and those sorts of things. So this was just additional signage for that. Next item.
Question.
Go ahead.
Do we own those signs now?
I believe you do. You should. They're probably.
They're used, you know?
Yeah, you own them. You bought them, so.
Thank you.
Item 231, miscellaneous unforeseen utility work. There are a number of different places on the project, and we've had this discussion in the past where, you know, when they start opening up excavations, things aren't where they were mapped, or they find unmarked utilities and different things. We've had different items that have come to council before. This is part two for those items. These were items that were identified in the past during construction, but maybe at the time we brought the first item, we didn't have all of the pricing available. And so this is unforeseen conditions that were encountered during construction and needed to pay, whether it was additional pipe fittings, or slow in production, or it could be a variety of reasons that the contractor incurred additional costs, but it was not included in the original scope of work. Okay. Any questions on this one? All right.
Actually, I do.
Yes.
I was just going to say, since it's miscellaneous on our end, do you get to review that, or does?
Yeah, the, yeah, the staff report included some listings of those, of the particular areas that these were encountered and had a description of those.
Okay. Sorry I missed that. Thank you.
That's right. So I'll take 66 and 80 together, repair leaking water mains at the north abutment and also at PSA site. In these two particular cases, during work, Anvil observed water bubbling out of the ground and so contacted. City staff determined through no fault of their own that there were water lines that were leaking, one which one was known by operations staff. They just hadn't gotten to it. Both of these were within Anvil work areas, so they can't, we can't really have city staff working inside of Anvil's area. It's not really safe for them, it's not safe for Anvil, so it was just easier to have Anvil do the work because they were there. So in these particular cases, this was repairing city water lines that leaked during construction. The next one, PG&E bollards. The yellow, these yellow posts that go around the transformer, those are called bollards. Here's the problem with PG&E bollards, if we can have that conversation, which is the designer designs the, they design the facility, and then PG&E, because they own the transformer, they get to own the design. And it's at the discretion of the person doing the design and installing the transformer for what they want this. So they added, I believe, seven or eight bollards around these, and unfortunately for the city, you get to pick up the tab. So that's what this particular change was. So they directed Anvil to do it, and Anvil had to put additional bollards around the transformer.
I have a question. I didn't get to ask about 66 and 80.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
The change order for the water line, why, so they broke the water line?
We couldn't, we did not, we don't believe that they broke the water.
How do we know that? Is that self-reported?
Well, when we see water bubbling out of the ground, this is an old, I think, earlier in the council meeting, we had discussed AC pipe. This is old brittle, squishy pipe. In one case, I think over by pump station A, had been a leak that the city had known about for a bit. Through the determination of, it was between the construction management staff and city operations staff, we concluded that these were not, this was not Anvil's problem. This was a city problem due to an old water line.
Haven't they broken other water lines, though?
They have.
And who paid for those? Did we pay for those?
In some cases, we split the cost with them, or we paid for materials maybe that the city provided, or I'd have to go back and look at the specific circumstances, but they have credited money back to the city on various places, or picked up the tab themselves when we've insisted that it was their problem.
Yeah, I would think that if they broke the water line, that they would pay for that.
Yeah, and you all, a lot of times, we wouldn't necessarily need to bring those to you because we just sort of adjudicate those at the project level, and we don't need to bring those to council to contemplate, because it would be on them, not on the city.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
The last one, number 78, is kind of, it's a little bit difficult to explain, but I'll do my best here. The pump station discharge piping has some small diameter lines that allow flow between what we call a check valve that doesn't, so when a pump pumps, it pumps through a check valve, and so when it stops pumping, so that the sewage doesn't all come flowing back into the wet well, and you just recycle flow all the time, we have a check valve. And so there'll be some flow trap between the check valve and the pump. And so when the pump quits pumping, that water has to drain somewhere, and it goes back into the wet well. During some commissioning, during the testing of the backup generator and other things, we were going through a series of tests that were required by the design, one of which we determined was probably unlikely to happen, but it created a lot of stress on those lines, and we broke some of them. So, or they, you know, they broke some during commissioning. So between city operations staff and the designer, we concluded that it would be better to construct these out of stainless steel and not Schedule 40 PVC like they were specified, even though that the circumstance of the failure was unlikely to really be replicated. It was, you know, however unlikely, it was a likely failure pathway. So the conclusion was construct these out of stainless steel. And so in this particular case, just shy of $17,000 to replace fittings on six different pumps across the two pump stations to convert those from plastic to stainless steel.
And you're saying that that's not industry standard, is to have them be stainless steel? It's fine to have them be PVC?
PVC was rated for the pressures that we would anticipate they would see. The problem was when you put them through a failure mode, you're putting a lot of stress on those parts that they wouldn't otherwise see on a daily basis. And so the PVC met the requirement of the discharge pressures, but again, during testing, those discharge pressures were greatly exceeded. So it was better to construct those out of stainless steel.
Okay. Thank you.
So last two, I will take Water Works engineers, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Heimel before we can take final questions. Water Works engineers is the design engineer on the conveyance facilities, and one of their tasks is to support, we call them engineering services during construction, or ESDCs, because the project has gone on longer, and we've actually amended their contract one other time. They get requests for information, they get all these other things. They exceeded the original budgets for this, and so we had those additional services. When I presented at PWAAB a couple of weeks ago, we had not gotten final pricing on the third bullet, which was to backfill the Asbilt record drawing budget. One of the things we have to do during construction is we have to keep things moving a lot of times. And so they used budget from a task that they were scoped to do that we then had to put money back into. So of the $75,000, $35,000 of that is to provide the city with Asbilt, what we call Asbilt record drawings. So the project changed during construction, and they have to add those changes to the design drawings. So that's what that particular task is. So the Water Works, we'd recommend approving that amendment as well for $75,000. And I can take any questions on Water Works before Dan comes up for Rincon.
There are no questions. Paul, can we turn it over to Mr. Heimel?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just quickly, if council will recall, or those that were on council at the time, back in August of 2022, we were, the program team and the city was very happy to hear that they were awarded a $9.3 million grant from the U.S., United States Bureau of Reclamation, Title 16 Water Reclamation Program. And however, to access that fund, the city would need to complete an environmental assessment, a piece of National Environmental Policy Act legislation requirement, or NEPA. And so the contract that we're bringing forth due today is for Rincon consultants to prepare the environmental assessment so that the city can access that $9.3 million in grant funding that was made available because of the right recycled water components of the project, and then also just to provide additional environmental consulting support for the program as it moves through recycled water implementation.
Any questions?
I was wondering, was this not already done, this, prior with the SEQA Plus?
So, no, the program has not had an environmental assessment completed for it. The program has received other federal funding through the EPA and the WIFIA agreement. However, it had achieved compliance when that program's environmental requirements through a sort of a programmatic approach that applied to all or a number of projects that got WIFIA funding. However, the Bureau of Reclamation, a different federal agency, has its own specific requirements for how its grantees, what environmental analyses they need to complete in order to access the funding that they award, and those requirements are completion of an environmental assessment.
So what's a SEQA Plus?
And I am not an expert in environmental assessments, but I believe that a SEQA Plus is an analysis done to comply with certain state or SEQA requirements, but then also does include some additional elements to help meet some federal requirements that may be required by certain funding agencies.
But not this? Not the?
Not this.
Hmm. It's really confusing.
It is definitely complicated, you know? There are a number of great funding sources out there, and they're all with, you know, individual and different requirements.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Heimel?
Well, I have one other one. I'm wondering, how much, do you know how much it will cost per acre foot to produce the recycled water?
I don't have an estimate for that at this point. There have been estimates that have been prepared through the earlier planning documents that, you know, we can reference, but the program team at this point is really looking to collect actual data on the energy and electricity, oh, same thing, the electrical, chemical, and other costs to produce the recycled water through the testing of the advanced treatment system at the Water Resources Center. So and as Mr. Amico described, that system has been constructed and will undergo testing in the next couple of months, and at which point we will be able to bring a definitive answer on what are the costs to produce an acre foot of water through the facilities that are constructed at the Water Resources Center.
So in the next couple of months, we'll know that answer?
Yes.
Like, what, two months?
Two might be a little aggressive. You know, as was mentioned earlier, the program team is working with the Division of Drinking Water Regulators to deal with some additional requirements for the testing program. So my understanding is that some initial testing will occur in the next two weeks, just testing out sensors and some other components of the project. That information will then be provided to DDW. Once they approve that the sensors are providing them with the necessary information that they need to determine that the system is operating effectively, then the program team will implement the test plan and what we call the UV AOP challenge testing. And so after that point is when we will then have the actual data on the cost to run those treatment processes. One of the sort of unknowns in that is how quickly we can go from collecting the sensor data to, well, we know we can do that quickly, but how long it's going to take DDW to review that and then to give the go-ahead to proceed with the full testing procedures.
And thank you, Mr. Heimel. I would just qualify that after we do have that data, we'll have a very good estimate of what the costs will be.
And that will include the drill, all the drilling and that needs to be done and stuff?
Well, so specifically, that would include, sorry, and maybe I misunderstood the question. That would be the cost to produce an acre foot of advanced purified water at the Water Resources Center. That's the real-world data we're getting. In terms of the overall cost for the recycled water associated with all the recycled water facilities, capital and ongoing O and M costs, we'll have a much better idea about those costs once we have the basis of design report referenced earlier. So the basis of the design report is going to provide the hydrogeologists recommendations for the number and locations of the injection wells. We will then utilize that information to estimate the amount of pipeline and other infrastructure that will need to convey the advanced purified water to those wells, and that will really help us solidify the capital costs of the whole program. And then we can combine that with the O and M costs that were. And then we can combine that with the O and M costs that we're, we will be obtaining from the Water Resources Center. And I would say at that point, then we would really be able to provide that updated cost of the water from the IPR program.
Okay. And tell me again when that's going to be done, the Basis of Design?
Basis of Design Report is, is close. So I would say a month or two till the Basis of Design Report. I'm, I'm optimistic that we can bring that forth and, and then we can combine that with the data from the Water Resources Center.
And that, that one's behind schedule too, huh?
Which one?
The Basis of Design, the Basis of Design Report?
Yeah, well, it's, it's behind schedule in reference that it was tied to the schedule for the injection well. And so due to the delays and being able to contract with the driller and get the injection well constructed, that pushed out the, the overall recycled water facility schedule.
Which I imagine raises the price, the more it's delayed.
I mean, cost escalation that occurs with inflation. So there is that element of it.
Thank you. Thank you for being so patient with me. It's hard to, to grasp all of this.
No problem. I, you know, this, these IPR programs and even the way I say it, IPR programs, it makes it complicated. These recycled water programs, especially with the injection and the extraction components and then tying it to a complete relocation of a wastewater treatment plant and all the conveyance, there are a lot of different elements. And so I'm happy to answer as many questions as the council or others have to help everyone better understand that. And was very, very happy to have the opportunity to talk to a number of community members at the completion event last week and try to at least answer as many questions as I could about where we're at and where we're headed and how this water resource will be a great benefit to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heimel. Are there any other council questions before I open public comment? Seeing none, I will open public comment for item C3.
Mayor, we have one speaker slip from Mr. Simons.
Thank you.
But I see Mr. Heller is going to join us first.
He asked me to go first, so I'm going to go. Thank you to those of you in DC who are still up and listening to all this. The fact that you're back there doing this at the end of a long day is impressive and I thank you for, for that. Thank all you council members, the fact that there's two hours of public comment at every meeting, to me is a vote of confidence and excitement in the community about the five of you being elected. So I understand it can be tedious to listen to all the comments. That's a kind of a indirect compliment to the five of you. We're happy to have you on board. Staff, I appreciate the report you did, Sarah, it was really outstanding as usual. And, and the entire staff is so competent. It's just, we're, we're so fortunate to have the folks here that we have. I wanted to talk tonight just about a couple of things, primarily the report, the quarterly report that you get from the consultants on the sewer project. There's still a couple of years ahead of you. I want to make sure that you get the report that you want and that you need and that you understand. I'm not an engineer and unless I don't know something about you, I don't think any of you are engineers. It's very important to me to ask that you just asked the basic questions as you did, Councilman, Councilmember Landrum. The cost per acre foot is an important piece on the IPR, primarily because most IPR projects, the cost per acre foot is two, three, five, even 10 times more than the water that you're getting from your reliable source. State water is about $1,300 an acre foot, I believe. So the sooner we know what the real cost of that recycled water is, you'll probably be in a position to make some decisions about how many wells do we really want to put in? How much are we actually going to use this water? If, can we sell it to anybody at the price it's going to cost to produce it? So those are the kind of questions that I think you probably should be asking. Obviously, this part of the program unfortunately is sorely behind schedule, which eats up our staff time from doing other things unfortunately, looks like for another two years. That's very disappointing. I hope that it works out well and it's a reasonable cost when we do get this estimate. I think an estimate can be prepared for the next quarterly report regardless of whether the engineering is complete or not. An estimate can be made based on what, what the team knows and I would hope to see that at the next, the next report. The other thing I would like to see if I were in your shoes is this table one on page 41, 41 of the staff report, which I referenced, which is the program budget. The way this budget has been used throughout the program was that it's just updated as costs go up. I think we're at a point where we need an estimate of completion in the next quarterly report, more than just a budget number, but this is what we estimate it will take to complete the project. Thank you again for your service and thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Heller.
Jeff had to go first because my prepared remarks say I want to add to comments by Jeff Heller regarding the One Water Program. As to the recently toured treatment plant, job well done. This facility looks like it will serve the community for many years to come. I am concerned about the elephant in the room, operational costs. Our historic treatment plant was primarily a gravity feed system. We do have some history with lift stations, but the existing facilities are dwarfed by the new facilities. The need to push uphill the entire waste of the community 24/7/365 will take our annual operating costs to levels not seen before. Of even greater concern is that the new facilities are expensive pumps, et cetera. These pumps have relatively short lifespans and are very expensive replacement costs. We are headed to significant adjustments of rates and no practical way to conserve. As to the reclaim portion of the plan, I am not convinced by some of the assumptions and concepts of the reclaim plan. We are injecting water of an extremely high quality into an aquifer of extremely low quality. Now, this is meant to stop saltwater intrusion or many other reasons. I would like to see a cost comparison of full treatment, this would be potable water, versus reclaim. Alternative, we could sell it to Los Osos as it comes out of the plant. They could actually use it and treat it and it might be a benefit to them. I would like to see a comparison of full treatment to reclaim. The short-term costs may be a push with, with the long-term actually being a savings. Compared to using, comparing to using completed treatment versus injection and then re-treating the water before you can use it. What we're doing is we're taking water that's of a very high quality coming out of the plant, we're taking it down the hill, we're forcing it into an underground storage facility, basically the aquifer, which is so contaminated that we can't really use it. We're mixing that with water that's bad and then we pump it back out and we have to have yet another treatment facility there before we can put it back into the community system. I've never seen anybody do an analysis of this and I'm very concerned that we're going in the wrong direction. All these injection wells and all of these things may end up costing us more than if we just took the water to the next step to where it was potable. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for questions.
Mayor, we do have more public comment, they're making their way up.
I know she can.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Sorry.
It's all right. There's a couple more people behind me. Okay. So I want to say that you people on the council haven't been around since 2018. I'll just make that assumption because, I mean, you've been in town. However, we've been following this project for quite a while. And in 2018, the EPA requirements have already been satisfied. They are an EPA, but by all means. And in 2018, the city council certified the EIR, which covers this injection well site. It's on page 85 of the DEIR, figure 2.2. I printed them out and I forgot to bring the page to you. It covers this well field, which Mr. Heimel is talking about. So there's no need, in my view and in others sitting in the audience, to hire Rincon for $45,000, give or take. And all we need to do is ask the Bureau of Reclamation, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, if they will accept the document, the WRFEIR, that satisfies the NEPA. WIFIA gave us federal monies and they were satisfied enough to loan us $61 million, which was 49% of 125.9 million. Dr. Jennifer Jacobus of ESA, she was the one who ran all the EIR stuff, said no new mitigations are required. Environmental determinations were made and found to be adequate. The EIR stands. When time comes for the design to be built for the injection wells and the designer has any questions on this, all we have to do is point them to our website where this document of several hundred pages and an addendum to it for 170 pages exists. I want you to think about that tonight because this is redundancy. It's one consultant saying, let's hire some other guy. It's like we're the, we're the teats of the, of the cow, right? We've got money somewhere hiding. So, I mean, my husband has a hard copy of the EIR because he sat on Wolf CAC and they looked this over so we know what we're talking about. And from what I can see, the contractors are just milking the taxpayers and you make the decisions to stop that right now? You know, WWE and this, this agenda I have before you, they're, they're asking for giving them two, over $2 million? That's almost over half of their, their contract. Thank you. Where's that money coming from and where's that going to? Thank you.
I have a lot of questions, but I don't think I'll get them all. On Anvil's contract in particular, you know, when they first started in December of 2020, they were given 435 days to complete everything. Today's 806 and now they'll be given another 31 days. This is ridiculous. I have successfully managed several multimillion federal projects to completion on time and within budget. This, this just blows my mind. So some of the things that have come up that was just discussed right now, the, they keep calling the new center the Water Resources Center. Where's the close of development for that? The bike path closure, when it was originally closed, was supposed to be reopened by the end of 2021. It's now been 18 months later. Still isn't ready. The, both contractors still have messes and junk left all over the place and they need to clean that up. It really is an eyesore. Question, big question I have, where is the terminus of the IPR line right now? How far do they go with it? Does it connect? How much more distance does it need to go to connect to the injection wells? Do you have an easement for that? Do you have an environmental determination for that extension of the IPR line to get over there? Do you have to break up the new bike path to get to it? And then on the Bureau of Reclamation, where they say that they need the standalone document and like my wife just said, that when we hired ESA to do the AR, it was to cover the space. Their exhibits and the discussion of the injection well is in that document. There's nothing new. So what I'd like to know is who is the contact person with the United States Bureau of Reclamation so we can talk to them? I've talked to every agency involved in this project personally on the phone, so I would like to know who this person is so I can talk to them. Thank you.
So my questions are of a little different nature and they really, I think, I'm not sure they're questions, but I think that they, Betty Winholz again, that they relate to how the public perceives what's going on. And I'll give you three examples. The first one is that forever, or maybe the last 10 years, we have called all our water projects "One Water." And then all of a sudden this month, we're now going to call it "Our Water." So that's confusion for the public who has gotten used to the "One" term and finally understands what that means. And then in terms of research and looking backwards, if, if I'm 10 years from now and I want to know what happened back then and I see the term "One Water" and I see the term "Our Water," am I going to know that that's the same project? So I'm, I'm not understanding the confusion of renaming things. The second example of that would be the WRF and it's now the WR, the Water Resource Facility is now the Water, something else. It's, we've changed the name of the plant, that. And so, so again, why, once the project has been given all these permits under a certain name, then all of a sudden we're changing it? I, I don't know how that makes sense. And the whole idea, and this is an old complaint, and this is like we're calling this recycled water like we're going to use it. And the truth is, and this came up at the Board of Supervisors this morning, Oceano and South County and all the five cities, well, they're doing a recycled water facility as well. But then they admitted, no, we're just stopping saltwater intrusion. We're not really getting new water. And that's what's happening here. And I don't know if that, if you all get that, that this is not new water. We're not increasing our water capacity. We're stopping the saltwater from coming in. And so that's my third example of misnaming what's going on. And so I, I would hope that you would fix that. Thanks.
AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Mayor, there are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council for comments and questions, but before we get there, we're at 9:22, so I will ask my fellow council members for permission to go back, but I would like to limit it to 10 o'clock since it'll be 1 o'clock where I'm at. So support to go for another half hour.
I'll second that.
Everyone okay with that?
Mm-hmm, yes. Head nod.
Thank you. Head nods. Thank you. Thank you for the head nod. So questions for staff? Councilmember Ford?
I guess the questions that, out of the public comment that came up by Ms. Donnelly, the, the EIR report, can staff comment on the need for Rincon?
Sure. Yeah, we, you know, obviously talked to them about that because we know the same things that they're talking about. That was on our mind, the first, right out of the gate, as well as, you know, Buy America and some other stipulations that were problematic with this grant. So we talked to them and they're still requiring that we do this process. They're the ones giving us the money. We probably should do what they're telling us to do. That's, that's that question. Thanks.
That's the only question I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, any questions?
I'm wondering if somebody, I don't know who would speak to this, the completed, meaning the full versus the reclamation of the water they were talking about earlier.
Mr. Quillik?
Councilmember Edwards, I, I don't think I caught the entire question. Would you mind repeating it?
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about the completed or full water as opposed to reclamation. I may have gotten that terminology wrong, but if somebody could speak to that?
Is that my last question? Is that the last question?
I'm not sure I understand the term completed water, but...
It was mentioned by a public comment, sorry, and I may have just got it worded incorrectly.
Do you mean the salt, the salt, what she was saying about the saltwater?
I think that would probably be a part of it.
Stopping the saltwater, not getting drinking water, is that what you meant?
Yeah, as opposed to not increasing our water capacity. Betty's was part of that, but there was something before that. So I think I'm just trying to understand the difference between taking it to full potable water as opposed to...
I think you made it direct versus indirect.
Thank you.
There is no regulations to allow cities to do direct potable reuse right now. That means literally coming out of the treatment plant and going into your tap. That's not permissible yet.
Got it.
When we did this project and we started the planning years ago, we looked at that and they're not going to permit small communities as their test runs. So it could be something that's done in the future, but we had to make a decision at that point in time what we knew and we brought on Corolla, who are experts in the field of indirect potable reuses. And now we're proceeding forward with Dan Heimel and Associates to help us execute on that project. Totally understand what the community members are saying. It makes a lot of sense. Unfortunately, the regs aren't there to support it yet.
And thank you, City Manager Collins. I'll also add to the other part of the question.
Thank you.
From Councilmember Landrum, which I take to be whether or not the recycled water component of the project actually adds water to our groundwater basin or whether it is simply there for protection against seawater intrusion. And the fact is that our groundwater basin and, Dan Heimel will correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a permit limitation on how much water we can pull from that basin. That's 581 acre feet per year. And if we inject our advanced purified treated water, it will increase that amount correspondingly. So it absolutely will increase the amount of water we can pull out of the basin, again, assuming an operational strategy where we fully employ that system.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Any more questions? Councilmember Edwards?
It certainly is complicated. Just trying to wrap my mind around all of it. I appreciate that. Thank you, Greg Qualick.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
I would like to hear from Mr. Qualick on the issue about pumping uphill 24/7, wearing out pumps more quickly. These were, this was mentioned by a member of the public. That's, yeah. So I'm just curious about that. I had not heard that come up before. And I know that we looked at many different locations and this was the final location before we ran out of Moreau Bay to put it in. And so it's not, it's not unexpected that we would be doing more pumping, but I'm just curious about what staff knows about it, what our consultants know about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton, for that question. I can speak broadly to that right now, that yes, you know, if we are pumping wastewater uphill through a series of pumps, then operationally speaking, it will be more expensive and the city is planning for those future expenditures and replacements in the sewer fund. So I don't know if there's any additional detail that you're looking for. I don't have an estimate yet of what those additional expenditures would be on the operational side because they involve things like energy usage and failure rates and things like that that, you know, time will tell on some of those.
Right. And that's what I was after. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, any more questions?
That's a good, a really good question because didn't the fire station just have to have a pump replaced in their systems? And I think I saw it on the budget and it wasn't cheap. Let's see. I wanted to ask about, oh, the coastal development permit that was asked about? Can someone answer, speak about that?
Mr. Collins for Mr. Qualick?
And thank you, Councilmember Landrum, for the question. I'm not sure what the specific question is about the coastal development permit. We do, are you speaking about the coastal development permit that allowed for the construction of the treatment plant and conveyance systems or something else?
It was what Mr. Donnelly just asked about a little bit ago.
I didn't catch a question about that. I apologize. Perhaps Paul Amico heard that question in front of me.
Oh, Paul.
We've fielded this question a number of different times about the coastal development permit and Mr. Heimel had explained that there are different measures that we have to go through and there's different components of the coastal development permit as was approved by Coastal Commission and so we're working through those. And I think that the injection component of it, there are certain measures that we've met as part of the Water Resources Center and the pipes and pumps. And then the injection component is broadly approved, but weren't you saying there were additional measures that? I'm running out of runway because I focus on the Water Resources Center and the pipelines and pumps, not the IPRs.
And I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but I mean, I guess I can answer where Paul is headed that, yeah, so there, we will be submitting additional special condition reports, one for the design and one for the construction of the recycled water facilities, similar to what the city submitted for conveyance and the Water Resources Center, as we're now terming it. I guess my interpretation of the comment was, and I may have totally gotten this wrong, that, but where's the coastal development permit for the Water Resources Center? Again, speaking to the change in nomenclature and I...
Oh, I thought it was for the reclaimed water part. No, but I could have understood it wrong.
Well, and I could have as well, so I mean, I can speak to that. Again, the coastal development permit, I think is Mr. Amico described, in general covers the recycled water facilities component of the larger WRF program. But as envisioned and as we completed, as the city completed with the other components, there needs to be specific design details that are submitted subsequent to obtaining the coastal development permit. And so that, those steps are still to occur as the design of the injection wells and the pipelines to feed those wells is finalized.
Okay, thank you. And then I don't know who should answer this one. Who is the contact person for the Bureau of Reclamation?
We can, well, go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. And I do apologize, I am having some unstable connection here. So I understood your question to be who is the contact person for the Bureau of Reclamation. I can certainly forward that to you offline if you're interested.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, so this is, the big number, I guess, in this whole thing is the $2 million increase for the WWE. Could someone explain that a little better? Again, probably.
Okay. So there's not a $2 million increase to the contract. It is a $45,000 increase to backfill tasks that were overrun during construction because we bring items to council coincident with the quarterly report and we had to keep construction moving. So they expended budget for scope items that were future items and we've had to backfill those because they incurred additional cost related to that. Their total compensation for everything from the beginning of design, which was 0% design or very, very conceptual design through conceptual design report into detailed design, supporting construction is the number, which is $2 million. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's not an additional $2 million.
Okay. And this is probably for Mr. Qualick, regarding the confusion of the "one water" to "our water" and the "WRF" to "WRC," is there a way to kind of make that, is that going to be an issue for people looking things up in, you know, in the future? Would it be better to have them all kind of align with the same, consistently with the same terminology?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Landrum. I understand the comments that were made by the constituent. I'll just clarify it now if that helps. "One water" refers to the "one water plan." That is a capital needs assessment for all water sewer and stormwater facilities and really is a list of potential projects, dozens of projects that have, many of which have nothing to do with the WRF program. And that was a document that was put out, I believe, in October and November of 2018. So that's the "one water plan." That's different from the "our water" program, which I believe was an early attempt to brand the WRF program. And frankly, that tagline never really caught on. So it is still on our brochures and, you know, we are considering and will be working with the WRF Subcommittee on this and P-Web as well as potentially City Council if the council felt that it rose to that level of rebranding the program in general, particularly also the recycled water component of the project. And to me, in my observation, we've been referring to the WRF project as the project that was the construction of the plant, much in the way that someone says, you know, "We're going to build a house." But we wanted to give that house a name, you know, Greg's Cabin or Greg's Chalet. And so in similar fashion, we had a discussion with the WRF Subcommittee about a year or so ago, maybe nine months ago, about potential names that would accurately describe what that plant does. And so we kicked that around for some months and we did decide on naming the plant the Water Resources Center because of the fact that it does provide a resource for our community and it will ultimately provide potable drinking water for the community.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council members? Everyone's good? Okay, I'm going to start with comments and then hopefully we can get through those and get a motion here in the next 20 minutes. I share concerns and frustrations with many of the people who spoke. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. It is, as Ms. Donnelly said, they've been following it for years. We have in other ways, but we've delved into this, sitting on the Subcommittee. Councilmember Landrum and myself have spent hours and hours and hours weekly over the last several months with staff's time, helping us get up to speed and we're still struggling, trying to figure it out. So I appreciate the comments from the community and them trying to understand. I see that there are three change orders that you're asking for, 124,970, 75,043, 532. It all adds up and I think there are a lot of questions that were asked tonight about estimate of completion, you know, what potential operational costs are and all those things that I think our community and our rate pairs all want to know. The names have been confusing. I totally agree with Ms. Winholz. I'm confused as they change and hopefully council will be interested in participating in rebranding. All that being said, you know, we need to keep moving forward as part of our program for our water resiliency and I understand that, but I intend to proceed with caution on my end in where this is going and what's going to work and what isn't and how much it costs. The one thing I'm hearing from everybody in the community, huge, is about the bike path not being available. That seems to be the overwhelming community question. When is it going to be open? Why isn't it open? And a lot of frustration that it's not. So with that being said, I'm done with my comments. I will turn it over to the rest of you for your comments and hopefully a motion. You want to start down at the end with Councilmember Ford?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all who are involved with this, with this report, as well as Public Works Advisory Board, who also represented this and asked a lot of great questions. I enjoy actually, as has been mentioned many times, it's very confusing. There's a lot of elements to it and so hearing it twice is great. So I just want to say that, as the mayor said, you know, moving forward on this, but I would like to see that bike path opened as soon as possible. And I know, I know you're feeling the pressure there, but I'm going to add a little bit more pressure to that. But, but yeah, so I just, I can make a motion, but I would also welcome any other comments first.
I would just like to say that, like the mayor mentioned, being on that, the Subcommittee, I've had a little bit of back, you know, not background, but just I've heard this information a little bit and I feel, I mean, so sorry for you not, I mean, I guess you have Councilmember Ford with the Public Works Advisory, the P-Web, but it's so hard to understand. And I would just ask that maybe it be simplified. The information seems like overly technical and maybe it, you know, it's kind of repetitive, some of it, and it seems like maybe it could be simpler for us. You know, we're not engineers and, I don't know, that's just a thought. Yeah, but it's really complex to understand and it is so much money. It's, and it's really taking a lot longer than it's supposed to. So it's, I don't know, it's a lot.
Thank you. With that, if there are no other comments, I will look for a motion.
All right. I'll take that one. Okay, so I move, do we need to do these each by, each one separately or one fell swoop?
One.
Okay. All right. So I move that we approve, let's see here, Amendment Number Seven to the Agreement with Anvil Builders, Inc., for the WRF lift stations and offsite pipelines, construction for $124,970, which results in a total not to exceed contract value for Anvil of $34,960, oh, so $34,964,314. Sorry about that. An increase, an increase of the Anvil contract budget to the new contract value. And Number Two, approve Amendment Number Five to the Amendment, sorry, the Agreement with Waterworks Engineers, WWE, to continue to provide professional engineering services during construction for the conveyance facilities project for $75,000, which increases the total not to exceed contract value for WWE to $2,615,113. And to approve Number Three, execute a new contract for RINCON Consultants, Inc., to provide professional environmental permitting, consulting services for the recycled water component of the WRF program in the amount of $43,532.
Second.
That was a mouthful. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes. Yes. I guess you didn't hear me second.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember... Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you to the consultants who stayed. Thank you to all the community who stayed to participate in this very important, ongoing project that we have, and thank you for your input and helping us as we move forward on your behalf. Council declarations for future agenda items? Are there any future agenda items? Struggling with my internet here too, like Mr. Qualick. Okay, with that, are you still there, Mr. Collins?
I am.
He hasn't walked out yet.
Walked out yet. I can't see you. It's one of those things that keeps flipping off because I'm talking now, right? I just want to thank you for everything.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you out in the community, and thank you for your help.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for yours. And with that, if you want to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Collins, that would be great.
Meeting is adjourned to, when's the next meeting? March 14?
You don't care.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not on my calendar anymore. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.